Councilman Hicks, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for bringing us together to do your work in the city of Cibolo. Just let us make those decisions that are crucial and willing for your will. I want to lift up in prayer the Lawson family, their loss over the last week, also the Benson family, as they have a loss. And we just lift them up in our prayers and hug them and let them know that they're thought of. We lift up our firefighters, our first responders, and our military personnel, that you keep them safe. In these things we pray. Amen.
All right. We are going to move on to a proclamation for Meals on Wheels, read by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
It is my honor to read this proclamation for Meals on Wheels for their drivers, whereas, on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older American Acts of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas, the Meals on Wheels program delivers a vital and crucial service by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas, upon opening of the Cibolo Senior Center in January 2022, the Meals pickup location was moved to the center with the support of the City of Cibolo to provide and manage drivers from area residents. And whereas, the City of Cibolo has a volunteer force of caring individuals who donate their time, vehicles, gasoline, and energy to deliver 14,743 fresh nutritious meals in fiscal year 2023 to the Cibolo Shirts Marion residents. And whereas, due to the increased need for meals for our homebound seniors and disabled neighbors, the number of routes increased from six to nine, for which our residents stepped up to support. And whereas, volunteer drivers are the backbone of the Meals on Wheels Home Delivered Meals Program, not only delivering nutritious meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also providing caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas, Meals on Wheels provides nutritious meals and a powerful socialization opportunity for seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation, and helps them maintain their health and independence, and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations or premature institutionalization. Now therefore, Mayor Mark Allen of the City of Cibolo, Texas, do hereby thank all of our wonderful volunteer drivers and encourage every citizen to take the time to volunteer for the Meals on Wheels program to enrich the lives of the seniors of our community. Your participation can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America.
Okay. Peggy, was that? If it's not on the agenda. The, accept the award. Okay. Come on up. Okay.
Come on up. We're gonna take a quick picture and then we'll give you some of the podium and say a few words if you don't mind. We'll do the picture first.
Okay.
Y'all seem a little small.
You know the drivers?
Yes.
Who's taking the picture?
This is self-taking.
Just smile.
You got it for us? Okay. Thanks, Valerie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks, thank you.
... who would otherwise not have food to eat possibly for that day. As Norma Sanchez mentioned, in the fiscal year 2022, I'm proud to report that we've served 14,743 meals. This averages out to roughly 58 meals delivered per day, and 58 of our neighbors who otherwise, again, would go hungry. While these numbers are both heartwarming and impressive, it does not fully describe the impact this program has on our community. While the meals are a necessity of our neighbors in need, many of them are physically handicapped in one way or another, and do not have access to the rest of the world like we do. These volunteers who deliver these meals to them not only bring them food, but also a window to the outside world. They are a conversation that would otherwise not be had, a welfare check to ensure their well-being, and over time, build a bond with that leads to friendship. We truly could not do this without them. As I mentioned before, we currently have nine routes that are covered Monday through Friday, regardless of weather and road conditions. These are drivers that whether it's icy, rainy, pouring sometimes, they without a doubt deliver any time and any way. In total, we have 50 committed Meals on Wheels drivers, and are the backbone to this program, as you just heard. I would like to recognize them in front of the City Council, and all of the citizens here today, as you just did. I would also like to mention that we appreciate Councilwoman Norma Sanchez and Katie Cunningham, as they have also committed to being volunteers for our Meals on Wheels program. Thank you so much. As our community continues to grow, so does this program. The need for more volunteers continues as we continue to grow. If anyone is interested in joining us, we would love to have you partner with us, and even if it's once a month, we would love to have you do that during your lunch hour, or anytime. We would love to have you a part of our Meals on Wheels team. And again, thank you for this time, and thank you for recognizing them as part of the proclamation for the city.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. We really appreciate you and all of your volunteers for this successful program. All right. Next up is Citizens to Be Heard. This is the only time during the City Council meeting that a citizen can address the City Council. It is the opportunity for visitors and guests to address the City Council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The City Council may not debate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the City Council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General Opinion JC 0169. Limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the Council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the Council, so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern, and not disruptive to the meeting, or threatening to the member or any attendee. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is live-streamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Cibolo, or on an agenda item, and have this item read at the meeting, please email psemics@cibolotx.gov, and vchapman@cibolotx.gov, or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM on the date of the meeting. All right. First up, we have Stephanie Whitson. Okay. Did you want to speak again, Stephanie?
I wanted to speak on something that's real true to my heart, that didn't have anything to do with Meals on Wheels, and take the opportunity since I was here, if that's okay. I would love to look over here at our wonderful police and fire department. I won't get emotional, but I want to deeply, deeply let you guys know how much we appreciate your support. For the, over the past two years, you come out on a monthly basis with the fire department, and you give us training for the seniors. You take the time through each fire department, and we appreciate that. And Chief Andres, thank you for today, for the Mardi Gras celebration. You took an hour and a half with the police officers to make every heart there feel special. And not only today, but again, through the past two years, we want to thank y'all for being such a big part of our community, and reaching out to those that are of all ages. So thank you so much, and thank you again for your time to be able to speak.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right. Next up is Maggie. Come on down. Welcome.
Price is Right.
You won.
Good evening, Council. I wanted to first, before I gave a few announcements, extend my thanks and gratitude on behalf of Zen Bubble to Matt, Kelsey, and Sebastian. We were trying to get their CFO going. There was just a couple of hiccups, a little bit of a misunderstanding on the part of Tandra and Donnie and stuff, and these three just jumped right on in and got the CFO going. And as you know, Mayor, because you were out there, and it was a pretty full room, we were able to open them. So again, so grateful, so thankful to the city of Cibolo, and these staff members who just leap in there to help our small businesses. Also, we have a ribbon cutting, if you could mark your calendars, another Cibolo business. This is on the 22nd of February at 10:00 AM. Beazer Homes is doing a grand opening ribbon cutting for a new division in Vanneta Crossing. So if you can come out, we would love that. Also, March 6th, CertaPro Painters relocated to Cibolo. And so we'll be opening them up on that day at 10:00 AM. And the last thing I have, and I see that it's on the agenda, but our luncheon next week, the RST piece have closed, but we have a record number, 231 business representatives coming out. We've never had that many. So I think they're all very eager to see the presentations of the cities, and the very friendly competition between the city managers of the best video. And of course, we all know, last year, by audience applause, Cibolo did get the best video. I mean, if everybody was going, but yes. And I think there's like a little secret thing going on, seeing who's going to win this year's. But always our most favorite attended luncheon. We're so looking forward to celebrating the successes of Cibolo, as well as the other cities, and looking forward to hearing about the projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Next up is Randy Kleptico. Did I say that right, Randy? I'm sorry.
Klepetco.
Klepetco. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you. I wanted to comment on the amount of light pollution we have around here. When I first moved out here, I'm a professor out at Texas State, and when I first moved out here, 10 years ago, there wasn't a whole lot of light pollution, or sound pollution. No, I understand the encroachment of development, and I'm all about development. So I understand we have to do a little bit of sacrifices around here. But I recently, I drove back into town, and I noticed just some places, they have dome lights, and other places, they have really, really bright lights blowing up the sky. And I got home, woke up this morning, and watched a YouTube video, just showed up online, and said, oh, look, the insects, when they see these bright lights that are just dome lights, they run into them, they spin around them, doing like a spiral of death. And the problem is, in our neighborhood, we're about agricultural. A large percentage of our neighborhood is agricultural. So basically, we're killing off the things that are pollinating our agricultural products, because of moss, and that's what they do. So I just suggest that we put a light ordinance in place, so that we can at least have domed-down lights, so that we can minimize how much damage we do to the environment.
Thank you. Okay. Hold on one second, Randy. Councilwoman Cunningham.
I also shared with you a video, I shared with somebody here, with a video that expressed the details on the signs that they just discovered.
We all got it.
I don't think I got it. When was this?
Send it today.
Today. Okay. I haven't checked today. Okay. Councilwoman Cunningham?
I just wanted to thank you for sending us an email about that, and that video was really good.
Oh, appreciate it.
Yes. I wanted to let you know, we are working on our UDC, our Unified Development Code, that will be updated, and that's where we would have the rules about light pollution. We do have some regulations already about light, but we can always improve. When we do get to the point of redoing our UDC, I'd really encourage you to apply to be on one of the committees. We have citizens who participate in helping shape the rules and regulations for the city, and that may be a good fit for you and your knowledge base.
Even if I'm not a citizen of Cibolo, I'm just outside, I'm on the, just right on the other side of the park, which I believe is Shirts extended just area. So, but I see you guys. I don't see Shirts. I'm like on the side of the hill, so.
Well, we'll have to check the charter to see if that's allowed, but definitely keep it in mind. You can always apply. And then if you are allowed, based on your location.
Well, you've got my email. If I can, let me know.
Yes, thank you so much.
But you can also, but you can come and be a part of it, whether you're on the committee or not, you can come and voice your opinion.
Yeah, be in the crowd and speak to the board.
Okay. If you can keep me in touch with that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks, Randy. All right. Next up is Jason Singleton. Did I say that right?
I'll yield my time.
Okay. Amy Palmer, come on down. Welcome, Amy. How are you?
Hi. Thank you. Hi, council members. I'm taking Jason's time to read a statement from Emily. Emily Steuben owns Whatever Storage right across from me, and she is not able to be here tonight, so she sent me a statement to read. "We're business owners now, but we're homeowners first, and called Tully Road home long before Whatever Storage was ever a thought. I learned to drive on Tully Road. It was rough enough in 2004 to get up to speed and ride the bumps in my little Saturn, all the way to Jan O'Lane. Back then, it was fun. Now, not so much. I was told in November of 2021 by our county representative, who'd reached out and spoken to the mayor, that a complete rebuild of Tully Road had been approved. He said it wouldn't be in 2021, but we could expect that to take place in the following 12 months. Shortly after that, I notified my customers of the news. Here we are, over two years later, and the road is in worse shape, with little to no improvements being made. We have 334 tenants at this time. Roughly 200 of those tenants are storing vehicles, with most being trailers, RVs, and boats. Complaints come in regularly about the awful state of Tully Road, and occasionally, people end up vacating altogether, with the reasoning being not wanting to pull a trailer down the road required to get to us. Something's got to be done, and if it needs to, not be put off any longer. Thankfully, Malcolm and Amy have kept us in the loop, since communication from the city has been nonexistent, and phone calls have been left unreturned. We are in favor of the plan that requires the least amount of property acquisition of neighbors around us, and gets this road reconstructed in a timely manner." And that's from Emily. So now for my few minutes. Of course, I have the same kind of comments as she does on Tully Road. It's been a long time coming. It's been in disrepair since I've lived in Cibolo, and it's definitely getting worse. As most of you know, we've had accidents in front of my house, and damaged my property three times since I've lived here. Almost killed a young kid a couple of years ago, who ended up hitting my mailbox, and flipped, and caught the ground on fire from the transformer that landed on his vehicle upside down. And so, you know, it is a dangerous road. People drive on it too fast. The waves in the road, and the way it's set up, it's just too easy to catch air and soar on that road, especially if it's wet. You know, acquiring property from homeowners to do the shoulder is going to delay forever. People aren't going to sell, and it's going to tie it up for a really long time. Eliminating the shoulders on the sides, and just doing the drainings that's necessary, I think to do it, will probably be things that, you know, the neighbors would be more inclined to approve. So I think the last discussion was some culverts in key locations for drainage, but eliminating the shoulder on the side, which would cut the right-of-way acquisition down to just a few residents. And I think most of them would be in favor of that, because it wouldn't damage their property, and it would get this process moving. We do also think that we do need to add YO to 1103, and also Country Lane to where the railroad tracks are going to be done by Union Pacific. If, you have to go around that corner anyway for the drainage, and if you're just leaving a small chunk of just as bad road, you know, that's really would defeat the purpose, I think. So I'd love to see those extended, those directions to do that. But I'm in favor of whatever plan gets this project moving, and with minimal cost of getting right away from the residents. Thank you.
Well, Amy, your long, long wait is about to be over. So we are finally at that point.
Thank you.
We're about to vote to wider, to, you know, to improve Tully Road, let's just put it that way. I don't want to, you know, commit to how wide it's going to be, or anything like that. But no, we certainly hear your point, as far as, you know, we don't really need shoulders on both sides and whatnot. So we want to, like you and your neighbors are saying, to keep the right-of-way acquisition to a minimum, and to build a quality road that's going to last for a number of years. And so I know that Mr. Reed has done a really good job of meeting with most of the homeowners along Tully Road. He's had discussions with like pretty much all of them. There is one last homeowner or a couple that we're negotiating with, and so that's what we're doing, is we're probably not going to vote on this tonight, but on the 27th is when we anticipate to vote on this.
Okay. And our neighbors, Arky and Sandy are here, too, my next-door neighbors. They would be, they're right on the road, so they would be really heavily impacted, you know, if the shoulder was required, because, you know, the property line is so close, and their house faces the road. Some of us are a little further back, but, so eliminating the shoulders and minimal right-of-way is, would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on. Amy, Joel's got us.
Just so you know, I've been out there since 86, so I know that road very well, and how it has been that way ever since 86. So, but we are looking at temporary lowering the speed limit also right now. So hopefully, we can lower it, and hopefully, we'll have police out there patrolling it and writing tickets. So.
That would be great. We get a lot of Randolph traffic, trying to avoid steel traffic, and they go around that road to H-78, and they're flying in the morning. So it's really bad. And there are bus kids sitting out there sometimes in the morning. So it's a really rough road to live on. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Amy. All right. Next up, Malcolm McLaughlin. No hat. Welcome.
Mayor, Council, not here to beat y'all down. Y'all have done a phenomenal job. Listen to us every time we come up here and talk, but there's nothing more, really, I can say about Tully Road, besides my opinion, which is just one, and I've talked to quite a few residents, you know, neighbors I'm in contact with around our area. We want the better road with drainage. This last rain we got, they shut the road down, just if there's four inches of water on the road, they get to shut the road down. Buses can't come through, kids can't get picked up. It just delays a whole lot. If we can, our neighbor Vernon, he has two culverts just on that Country Lane and Tully Road. He's in grants. Go ahead, do it. I talked to the Hessers across the street, and that's what he does for a living, is road construction and commercial groundwork. And he said, number two is, you know, the better road is the way to go. And people were worried about sidewalks, steel, walking. When Steel Creek is complete, we're going to have sidewalks on Tully Road that go up, and will connect up into Steel High School, that road. So that's going to fix a lot of kids that come down to our area that are walking on that road. A lot of those walkers are going to use that neighborhood. And I want this road to get started as soon as possible, because when D.R. Horton brings their road down, and if our road is not done, we're going to be in a mess, because there's going to be traffic, and then we're going to have construction. So it would really be good if we get our road done before D.R. Horton comes down and puts their road coming out, because then they're just going to open up the floodgates. So that's, I appreciate city working the way they have. Wayne Reed, he's been in constant contact. All of council members, mayor, everybody's worked hard. It feels like y'all got a target on your back every time we come up here, but I really do appreciate y'all. And I would really, my vote is, go the better road. Let's do it right the first time. And we're going to have a different council, you know, every time we get an election. And we don't want to keep kicking this can down the road. Let's stop kicking the can. Let's say yes. Let's do number two. Says we got the money, let's roll. That's my opinion. God bless y'all. Have a great week.
Thank you so much, Malcolm. Really appreciate your help, and I really appreciate your community advocacy, and being a spokesperson and the voice for so many people in your neighborhood, and helping the city of Cibolo get the word out to all these property owners. Your help has been immeasurable, so thank you. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve items 7A through E and H, and like to pull F and G.
Okay. Do I got a second? I got a motion and a second. We'll start with, we'll start with Councilman Hicks.
Aye.
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 We doing the electric voting tonight? Minor glitch, okay. All right. Okay. So, debate on F and G. What we got?
Sorry. He's got a major glitch. Anyway, we did get this information today on some of the things I requested last time. There are some other items that I would like to, now that I have this, drill down on in the ordinance that we were sent the last couple of weeks. So we can have that discussion. I can just take that offline, and we can table it and bring it back, and be ready to go primetime in two weeks. If, that would be my, we can have it open if we want, or we can, I can just send emails and get answers to my questions, but that's up to you guys. If you want me to answer, ask them, go for it, we'll do it. Otherwise, I can just do this with the lawyer, and Mr. Reed, and whoever else.
Is there a deadline, Mr. Reed, to get these adopted by? Are we under the gun anywhere here?
Nope. We're operating under the current building and fire codes and National Electric Code, so it's just a delay in the sense of implementing the updated one. So we can work with this.
Okay. Yeah, I would recommend just working through email, and then that way, when we're in a position to vote on this on the 27th.
If it's, I would at some point like to, you know, maybe get Ms. Peggy involved in sending emails to everybody, or the lawyer can do that when we get some of these answered. I think there's some fairly significant questions I have, that I don't want to just blow by and say, well, it's not important. I just don't know that we need to necessarily discuss it here. We can, I can ask my questions, and if they're not significant, you can tell me that, and we won't worry about it. But if they are, and they need to be addressed, and then I would like all of council clued in, so it's not just we come back and things are modified, and nobody knows what was really changed. Because I probably am the only geek up here that's read the whole thing, and I'd.
We'd be happy to answer your questions. And I think, if appropriate, meet with you so that we can talk through those questions. We'll have written responses to all your questions, so that that can be shared with council in advance.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
So I make a motion to table 7G and H.
I make a motion to table 7F and G.
Yeah, what he said.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. We'll start with Councilman Benson.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number eight, staff update. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. The update, and I have this written, I will send this following the meeting as well. Ms. Titterington also mentioned the Chamber State of the Cities Luncheon on February 20th. So the mayor and several council members, you've already, through Ms. Semics, identified that you are attending, and you have your seat. If any of you have not done that, please do so. We will have a professional video done, and we expect to be better than our competitors in this friendly annual State of the Cities video. The HOA Knowledge Workshop, number three overview, I will leave this to Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Mahoney to speak to more, under their meetings that they had attended, but I just want to let council know that we did hold this on February 3rd. We had nine residents, Ms. Cunningham, Mr. Mahoney, several staff members in attendance. The topics that were covered included elements of code enforcement, how to be good neighbors, the 2024 Bond Program, and Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. The City Fiber Project, this is, again, the project in which we're connecting all city facilities. This is a network just for security of city facilities and communications. The GVEC, as you know, has been working on the poles that we have, will have our fiber hung on. They are moving at a quick pace. Over the past couple of weeks, they've been in downtown, along FM 78, that continue along the route. This will take the, so most work has been completed, with the exception of the Town Creek Area Section. This will take the most amount of time to complete. Public Works has been working on the right-of-way and getting what is necessary to run conduit underground for our fiber in this area, in the Bell. underground for our fiber in this area in the Belo Rosa neighborhood. Once the work is complete on the GVEC side, JC Communications, our fiber consultant, will be able to move in and begin installing the fiber. The strategic partnership grants applications, as of today, the city's received two applications. We have this open for submission until the end of the month, so we'll continue to update you on the number of submissions. And then, of course, those applications, we will help summarize them in an executive summary and bring that forward to council. You will elect how to divvy up your $10,000 budget for strategic partnership grants. On RFPs and RFQs, uh, the animal services facility request for bids was due February the 6th, um, the modular office building for animal services. We had nine submissions. There's a meeting tomorrow to finalize the evaluation of those submissions, so we'll be bringing, uh, the preferred bidder to council in the very near future. We also had on-call geotechnical and materials testing services that closed on the 8th of February. We had 11 submissions. And then we had the EDC legal services extend until the 15th. We have three submissions so far. And then portable kennels, uh, for the existing animal services facility, uh, closes on the 27th of February. And then, um, the CIP projects, there's not much change since the last council meeting, so I'm not going to repeat what I had from the last meeting.
Well, I've got a-
Yes, sir?
I've got a question on that, um, the CIP projects. The, um, Bentwood Ranch and Sibilo Valley Drive, I know that's been brought to your attention. There's water that sits there. And, and like I've said before, there's a natural spring that's there.
Right.
And it's leaking up and it's coming in between the curb and the asphalt. And it sits there. And my concern is we spent $8 million to fix that road and I asked several times about a French drain being put in. And to no avail, I, I was ignored. And here we are, we've got water that sits there constantly, Mr. Reed.
Mr. Hicks, if I can respond to that, and Jacob Parsons is here, I'm going to ask him to come up and speak to that. Uh, the water that you have seen at that intersection is not from an underground source, but it was from an adjacent residential lot. And Mr. Parsons worked very hard to help determine the, the, the source of this and to work with those owners. And so what you're seeing now is a great reduction in what was there. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Parsons.
And also real quick for you, Joe, um, I, I actually met with Mr. Reed on the same topic within the past week or so. And, uh, one thing that I asked about whether or not it's possible is if we could route that, um, storm water into the, uh, into the storm sewer. You know, that, that to me would be a good way to, to route it, so.
And Mayor, when you and I met, uh, we had not yet found the source of the water, so Mr. Parsons will give council an update on that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So the first thing that we wanted to go out was make sure that it was groundwater and not, uh, uh, city water, water coming from a city issue. Uh, we've had an issue there in the past, uh, with irrigation from the HOA that has been since turned off. So when we tested it, we actually tested to see if there's chlorine in the water. All of the city water has chlorinated water, right? And then all of groundwater will not have chlorinated water. So we actually found that there was chlorinated water in the water. So the first thing we did is we went to the HOA to make sure, um, that there was not a leak on the irrigation system again. Uh, we've come to find out that that was, that has been shut off and hasn't been running. So we had documentation on that. Throughout our investigation, we found a house, the house right behind had a, a small leak, um, right there on the corner. They had a small leak in their, um, in their spigot. We were able to get that to shut off. Um, came back a couple of days later, uh, we noticed that there was still water there, uh, it still had chlorine in it. So we went down, we noticed that a couple doors down, there was water coming out from the backyard and it was making their way down. So there was a lot of irrigation that was happening at that home. And so we had, uh, consulted with the homeowner, uh, let them know, uh, about irrigation and how much that we need to be irrigating, uh, so not to, to waste water and not to have an, uh, a high water bill. And so by doing that, we asked them to shut off their water for a few days and it dried right up. So right now, if you drive by, uh, you will not see the water on there. If you do, it's just small traces of water that's still drying up.
So council, I, I appreciate your concern about the public improvement. Um, the water that you've been seeing, as Mr. Parsons demonstrated, is, is not from an underground source. It is, it was from an adjacent residential, uh, course. And, uh, several of you have brought this to my attention. And so staff has worked very hard to determine that. And so I hope this answers your question fully.
Thanks very much, Mr. Reed.
And, and then, uh, just lastly, uh, this was, is an update from Chief Troncoso on the Fire ISO study update, which there will be a presentation to you in the near future. That our ISO consultant met with the city stakeholders on February 1st to start phase one of three of its, of the consultant's work. This phase will include a grading summary and provide the community list of suggested improvements to improve our fire ISO rating. Phase one report should be completed by the end of March. And again, we'll be in front of council with the consultant giving the results of that. And Mayor, council, that's my update for tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Yeah. So before we go into executive session, we're going to bounce up to 13B, which is discussion action to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number nine of an inter-local agreement, ILA, between the City of Sibilo and the Alamo Area Council of Governments, ACOG, for demand response route. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, tonight there is a, a member of ACOG in the audience, Sean Scott. If you want to raise your hand and come on up. I'm just going to do a quick introduction. He does have a PowerPoint attached to this item and I'll let Sean talk about this. Um, this is an annual item that we do. We're delayed in getting to you because, uh, Mr. Scott actually had some, uh, new opportunity at ACOG, was promoted and was doing two jobs. And so we were just patiently working together until he could provide the information that's in your packet tonight. And so this is our annual update to the ILA. Um, this past week, I happened to be in the HEB parking lot and I actually finally saw one of the ACOG shuttles providing the service that you see in this ILA. And I spoke to the shuttle driver and he spoke to, uh, the El Sereno Apartments, the Brooks, and that they do, they do help those seniors go to local establishments such as ATB and others that Mr. Scott will speak to. And the benefit that we're really providing with this partnership with ACOG. So although we may not see that shuttle very often, it is in the city on a weekly basis doing good for our seniors. And so with that, Mr. Scott, I'll turn this over to you.
And this is the ART bus that we talked about last time, Mr. Reed? The ART?
Yes.
Area Raptor Transit, is that what that stands for? ART? Okay.
I'm sorry, say it again.
The ART bus? Is that what it's called, right?
Uh, Alamo Regional Transit.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
It's actually rural transportation, but we, we've contracted with, or we're a subrecipient of the urban funds through Via Metro. So that's how we provide service with you. But, um, again, my name is Sean Scott. I'm the senior director of Alamo Area Council of Governments and, uh, I'm over transportation. One of them is Alamo Regional Transit and I'm also over public safety, uh, the Homeland Securities Division of, uh, of ACOG. Tonight we're here just to ask you to extend the ILA, uh, that provides the public transportation in Sibilo. I know that you always have questions and you want to see a little bit of statistics and I'll try not to bore you with a PowerPoint and I'll run through stats real quick and, and answer some questions, uh, when we get there. First thing I'll jump into is just how many trips we're doing right now. So I'll give you the overall ART, which thinks about it, our, our whole situation goes from Kerrville all the way down to Pierceaw to Karnes and Wilson Counties, Sagin, New Braunfolds. So over, uh, 2023, we did about 128,000 trips. In Sibilo, we did, uh, 2,890 trips. And then an additional thing we have going on in Sibilo is the El Sereno Route, which Mr. Reed spoke to. Um, that's a very minimal route. It runs once a week, about three to five hours a week, um, but we get a lot of response from it. It goes from that senior living facility and it just gives them a better quality of life going to Walmart and shopping, hair, or whatever they want to do. Um, so Sibilo accounts for about 3% of our trips. The next thing, um, on stats, and it was brought up previously, and so I just wanted to make sure we address it right now, is, is what we do with our, our call center. We had a lot of problems with abandoned calls or, uh, getting through wait line, wet, long wait times and everything like that. So Alamo Regional Transit as a whole did almost 102,000 calls that came in. We accepted. That means that we actually physically talked, a person talked to a person and, and scheduled a trip or anything like that. That was 79,000, a little bit more than 79,000 calls. We also have another category called diverted, so it kind of went to, uh, those could be things that somebody calls in and needs specialized attention. So they, they need to talk to an individual and it may take 10, 15 minutes, but we could divert those calls out of our call center into, uh, uh, another person to handle that. And then, of course, abandoned calls for ARTs wide was 18,600. That number is very high and I, I, I don't think it's good, but something to notice, if you look at the graph, um, in September, we implemented a, a lot of changes. We added a little personnel, we did some training, we, uh, uh, we, we brought in staff at their primary job and gave them a secondary job of handling phone traffic when times got busy. And so you'll see, starting September, October, November, that our abandoned rate went way down and the diverted rate went way down. So, um, I think that we made a good decision and, and it's working on communications now. Um, if you just want to talk specific Sibilo, um, 11,300 calls. We've got a category called short abandon. These are calls that we just could not even, we didn't even have an opportunity to talk to people. They call up and you might reach Alamo Regional Transit and they just hang up and get out. So we really don't have a way to categorize that. So we start with 11,000 calls. We look at the handled rate of 86% and the abandoned rate of 14%. Not acceptable, but if you start looking at where, looking at where we're at now, starting in September, we are where we want to be at 90% better on answering the phone calls and, and, and talking to people one-on-one.
They just drop the call or they, they, y'all don't actually come out and then you show up and they're not there, correct?
No, this is actually the telephone system. The calls coming in to reserve a trip and so, um, the, the call, the call traffic was so heavy that we just didn't have an operator to handle it. Some of those call abandons, I'll mention one thing on the side, is that we discovered that some of our staff wouldn't log out at night when they went home. And so the, the phone system doesn't shut down. And so it wouldn't go to a voicemail or anything like that. And so many of the abandoned calls were after hours because we didn't log out. So we found that solution and, and got after it. Talk real quick, just about a little bit of financial data for you to see what you're doing with the, what we're doing with the, the, uh, the partnership here. Um, if you look at Alamo Regional Transit region-wide, we're really at about $88 a trip. Here in the San Antonio UZA, we're around $64 a trip, just the denser population, shorter trips, that kind of stuff. So we're able to do that. Uh, Sibilo contributes around 8,000, I believe it's 8,100. And so when you start looking at the cost per trip on this, which is how the, uh, the Texas Transit Association and, or I'm sorry, Texas Transit Institute and the, uh, Via and FTA agreed as we were going to do this by trip cost. And so, um, there, there's better ways to do it, but this is what we have. And so when you look at the reimbursement of 221 a trip and then the match from the federal match of $2.21, you see a big gap there, about $60 per trip. And so we make that $60 up by doing contracts. And some, and many of the contracts are here in Sibilo and Shirts in that area. And so we have contracts with Medicaid to provide medical transportation. We have contracts with Area Agency on Aging to provide nutrition programs and stuff like that. So that's how we make up that 50, that almost $60 per trip deficit that's going on. But I could tell you that we're, we're getting a little bit behind on that right now. We're going to have an opportunity coming up. And so, I'm trying to keep this a little bit quick. Um, we have an opportunity coming up because the 2020 census count came in and redesigned the UZA one more time. So Sibilo and Shirts, they stayed in the San Antonio UZA. But the City of New Braunfolds, which took the bulk of the federal money to provide public transportation from, from the San Antonio UZA out here, was, became their own UZA and will receive their own federal funding and, and state funding for that. So we have an opportunity right now with a lot of federal funding coming in. And so we're going to come up with a plan and to present to y'all probably the, the first part of the summer, uh, of some different service options and see what people are comfortable with. Maybe some micro transit options, the same day, same hour service or expanded demand-response service or even, uh, taking the, the El Sereno Route and expanding it, you know, four or five days a week, something like that. But, um, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them or you can email or call or anything like that. Yes, sir?
My, my question is, make sure you get back to us before our budget season. It's where we know what we're looking for, um, as far as that 50% match. That way we, we've got a good grasp on how much we need a budget for.
Correct. And so I, I will tell you right now that we receive about 500,000 for, it was New Braunfolds, Sibilo and Shirts. And so New Braunfolds was taking up about 420,000 of that. Um, preliminary talks with Vias, they're going to, they're, they're going to leave that budgeted for us if we can come up with that local match. So, um, of course I'm in discussions with Shirts also and see what we can do.
So if we're spending $8,000, would our contribution drop to 4,000?
It'll probably go way, but you'll probably become, I, I, the, the things I would present to you would be much more comparable to the City of Sagin, which contributes about 250,000 a year.
Okay. Never mind.
With, with that being said, I know that, um, the AAMPO, because I know that you're on the board with me.
Mm-hmm.
They are taking on more counties around. Is ACOG doing the same thing or are they trying to stay with the jurisdiction that they currently have?
So the Alamo Regional Transit portion of this is we take care of the rurals. We're, we exclude Bear County, we don't provide any service there.
Okay.
And so we, we, we still have all the rural counties.
Thank you. I'll make a motion then to approve moving forward with this.
And the amount is what?
I believe it's 8,100.
Dollar amount, Joel?
81.
Okay. You want to include that in your motion?
13B as being $8,100.
And it's in the budget.
Okay, um, we'll, okay, we got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. We'll start roll call with Councilman Benson.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, seven zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We are going to go into executive session. The city council will convene an executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551 dot 071, consultation with attorney, 551 dot 072, real property, 551 dot 087. Economic development and 551 dot 04, I'm sorry, 74. Personal matters to, to discuss the following. A, GVSUD versus City of Sibilo settlement agreement. B, economic development, communication confidentiality. C, road conditions on Tolly Road and the speed limit. And D, negotiations with HEB regarding transfer of title to real estate from HEB to the city. E, Legros versus City of Sibilo, cause number 23 dash 0697 dash CVE. F, evaluation of the city secretary. The time is now 7:19. It's now 9:23. We are resuming from executive session. We have two points of action. I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Benson for the point of action on the Tolly Road.
I'd like to make a motion to table the Tolly Road, uh, what item is that on?
Yeah, which one? I think it's 11A. I'm sorry.
13C.
13C, thank you.
I'd like to table, uh, item 13C for, until the second meeting in February, I believe it's the 27th of February, 27th?
Yes, sir.
27th of February. And also authorize Mr. Hicks and the mayor to, uh, meet with Mr. Reed, the city manager, and the family on Tolly Road for further discussions and we will-
Second.
Second.
Okay, um, start with Councilman Hicks.
Aye.
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 Ayes have it, seven zero. Thank you, Councilman Benson. And, uh, Councilwoman Cunningham, or no, it's, uh, Councilman Hicks about, um, Peggy.
Yes, nine F.
Nine F.
Um, evaluation of the city secretary. Um, I make a motion for, um, the increase, as discussed in executive session, of seven percent increase dating back to October first.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. We'll start with Councilman Benson.
Aye.
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 Ayes have it, seven zero, Peggy. All right, so we are going on to, we're going to skip around a little bit because we have a few people in our audience tonight and we want to be cognizant of their time. So we're going to move on to thirteen E. Discussion action regarding the GVEC power-up grant application for electric vehicle charging stations located at one-oh-seven South Main Street. Kelsey Lee.
Good evening, Mayor Council. We do have a PowerPoint presentation that I will go through once it gets pulled up. Thank you for considering this. The deadline for this grant opportunity is this Thursday, so we wanted to make sure that we got this in front of you. So that way, should council direct us to apply, we can make sure that we hit those requirements for everyone. Uh, so as we go through this, ultimately, the question I'll have at the end is just, do you want us to proceed with submitting an application for this GVEC power-up grant? Going to give you some background on this project, go over what the current proposal is, some of the updates since the last submittal happened, and then what the next steps could be. So for some background on this, at different points over the last year, there's been some discussion at Citizens to Be Heard or discussions with EDC board members that there's interest in pursuing EV charging stations being located in the Old Town District, specifically to try to promote tourism and bring people to the area and then to, uh, go to our different shops and restaurants. Back in August of last year, there was an application that was submitted to GVEC after staff went to the EDC and city council for authority to submit. Uh, and then in October, unfortunately, we were notified that this particular project had not been selected for that funding cycle. Our city's grant writer, Michelle Martinez, who has come and made presentations before, did reach out to GVEC following, um, that unsuccessful submittal and asked, you know, how could this be more successful if we were to reapply? The main reason that was shared with her as to why this particular project wasn't awarded was simply just that there were some other projects that scored higher on priority and need. Some examples were bunker gear for a fire department, right? Very important. So that did outrank, uh, this particular project. Additionally, it was shared that the grant panel maybe had some divided views on the concept of charging stations, the popularity of the EVs, uh, things of that nature. And then it was also recommended to look at maybe including some additional letters of support. So going over what the actual proposal is, uh, it is for three level-two charging stations. And so there's kind of three levels that are seen. Uh, maybe your super-fast chargers, which are more like twenty-five, thirty minutes. Um, in some instances, your, um, overnight charging stations that are usually more like at residential areas that can take longer hours, plug it in at night. In the morning, your vehicle's charged. Level-two is being pursued for this because it can be anywhere from about two to four hours for the charging. And so that really fits more with the intent of having someone come to our Old Town District, plug in their car, and then spend that two hours or so actually going to our different businesses on Main Street. Uh, this is looking at one-oh-seven South Main Street, which is identified by that, uh, yellow rectangle there. That is the city-owned parking lot that's next to, uh, Global Realty Group, kind of across from where the church is. Uh, just for purposes of trying to get some initial price estimates, we did reach out to two companies. One was GVEC, just to see what it would cost for installation of these charging stations, and another was a private company. Again, just very initial installation cost. This is not full procurement that would be done should the grant be given. We would then go out and look at what the best terms are for the city. Would there be revenue sharing, maintenance, upgrades, things of that nature? Uh, but in general, it would be in the low to, uh, about maybe mid, the thirties for the installation of it. The GVEC grant is a maximum of up to twenty thousand dollars. And so that was shown there with an anticipated EDC match to cover the remainder of that. Again, just some preliminary numbers for discussion. So since that last submittal, we have worked with our grants writer to try to reach out and obtain additional letters of support from stakeholders in the community and region. Um, also looking at getting additional community feedback, there was an online survey that was conducted, uh, for twenty-five days on our Cibolotomorrow.com website, shared on social media, really just to solicit feedback on interest in EVs and EV charging stations in Cibolo. Uh, not a scientific survey by any means, but really just trying to open it up to both residents and, and even surrounding community members because those would also be individuals who would come. Uh, we did receive in that time period a hundred and fifty-nine survey responses. Uh, some general responses that had been observed. Uh, eighty-three percent of those who took the survey said that they do not currently own an electric or hybrid vehicle, and of those, seventy-eight percent said that they're not currently considering purchasing one. Uh, what I do think is interesting to highlight though is that still shows that seventeen percent of those who responded do own an EV, uh, which is, I think, fairly high for our area. Those could be eventually people who would use this. Um, but in general, right now, eighty-three percent saying that they do not own this type of vehicle. Uh, and then some open-ended responses have really showed, um, a request for, uh, consideration of other infrastructure projects. A common thing we heard, as you can imagine, is probably roads. Um, part of the education maybe we can do a little better on is to show that, you know, the matching funds of twelve to seventeen thousand dollars isn't really going to pay much for a road. Um, but that was just some of the feedback that had been received. Uh, so with all that in mind, at the January meeting, the EDC shared that, you know, it really does want to take a proactive stance on this and look at providing chargers and promoting the Main Street as a destination. Um, the EDC did vote for staff to bring this to the city council and proceed with submitting a power-up grant if council, uh, desires to do that. The next funding application is actually this Thursday, and so we're working on finalizing, getting those last remaining letters of support and data points. Uh, and then if council supports this application, we will make sure it gets submitted, uh, by the deadline of Thursday. Decisions on this particular grant cycle are anticipated to be released in April. And so it brings me back. Uh, of course, if council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer, but really we're just seeking your direction on if you'd like us to go ahead and submit for this funding cycle.
Councilwoman Cunningham, and then after her, uh, Councilman Hicks.
So just wanted to clarify a little bit on this survey. Um, one of the reasons I think the survey results were so skewed against this was that the funding was not clear. It was not clear that this would be funded through grant opportunities and appeared to come from our general fund. When, when you're looking at all the projects, this really would follow. However, with the available grants that we are able to apply for, it makes sense to go after everything we can. And that may mean things that wouldn't, uh, wouldn't be at the top of our list. We're not going to just magically find grants that are going to fix all of our roads. It'd be great if they existed, but not many infrastructure grants exist like that. This does exist, so it can bump this project up our list, um, which is why I support it. But I do want to, I did want to mention that that is why I think that the results were so negative on the surveys because there was an assumption that this is coming from general fund or taking away from projects that we already have, where it's not. It's a separate pot of money.
Councilman Hicks.
My, my question is, um, we've applied for the power-up grant. We can apply for that every year, but once we do receive the power-up grant, we have to wait a year? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, that, that's what I was thinking. Um, but we didn't receive it the last time.
We did not. So we've, we've met the eligibility requirements as far as sitting out for any, uh, previous, uh, rope awards that have been given.
And I know that I've got constituents that have asked me time and time again, I'm sure you know, um, because they've, they've come to me and they've came to the EDC asking for us to put in these EV, um, power, power stations. So, um, with that, if there's no more...
Councilman Mahoney has a question.
Okay.
Did anybody on staff make an, uh, effort to contact the suppliers of the cars, like Tesla, for example?
Yes, so following the August meeting when you had made that suggestion, I did make a few attempts to try to reach out to Tesla without having a direct person. I could just go through their website and try to do contact and kind of reach out to people I could find online. Uh, but no, I did not receive any response from anyone to my inquiries.
Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
Yes, I, I remember, uh, one time before when we, this first came about, that this particular parking lot was not very visible by residents and therefore wasn't really being used. And in just seeing the direction, just as well as EV goes, the batteries are very expensive when they go out. Sales have slowed. Interest rates are hard, are, are pretty high right now with autos, so the industry itself has slowed down. I'm not quite sure if this would be the best, um, time, you know, to go ahead and invest. I would rather invest parking signs that are more visible to utilize the space. And, um, I just wanted to make mention of that because I've also seen, um, where residents have, you know, kind of given some feedback on, why can't we just have more visibility of parking signs where everyone can, can park in this particular spot? So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilman Hicks, did, did you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, move forward with thirteen E as written.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We'll start with, uh, Councilman Benson.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nays have it, four-two-three.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And just to make a comment, y'all, we talk a lot about not having funding in our budget and we're now declining to even ask for money that is available out there. So just letting you know.
It's a grant, I know.
It's a grant. That's all they were asking for.
But not at a hundred percent? You know, we'd still have to pay, what, was it like twelve thousand or so?
And it's budgeted out of the EDC budget, which is a committee that we appointed to make those decisions, so.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to thirteen F. Discussion action authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement with ASN to have their equipment and technology used on city streets for the purpose of gathering street condition data for the city's use at no cost to the city. And I think this is a great, great thing. We did that traffic, um, condition study, I believe, back in twenty-eighteen. Is that right, Mr. Hicks? And I know that several of us, Katie especially, has been asking for, uh, for this to be redone. And so here is our opportunity for, uh, ASN to come along and, uh, and do this for us. So, Mr. Parsons, tell us all about it.
Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Allen and council. Um, so I'm pleased to present an opportunity to partner with ISHIN. Uh, and, and for those that don't know, they pronounce it ISHIN, uh, to help us collect data on our roads at no cost to Cibolo. I have Cam and Tommy here and they're going to help, they're going to present, uh, more about this opportunity and how it can be mutually beneficial both for us and them. And then we'll answer your questions at the end.
Thank you, Jacob. Ready to go?
Yeah. Whenever the presentation is available.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
My name is Cam Dan. I'm the, one of the assistant managers at ISHIN Technical Center of America. As Jacob mentioned, it is ISHIN. I got to admit, when I first came to Cibolo, I was calling it Cibolo. So we both were equally correcting each other. But thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all so much for the partnership between the city of Cibolo and ISHIN. ISHIN Technical Center of America, we're a division of ISHIN Corporation. As you all know, with the factory here, that partnership has been amazing with us. And so we really, really appreciate the partnership with the city. ISHIN globally is the fifth-largest automotive parts manufacturer in the world. We manufacture everything from the chassis, the transmission, which we do here, to sunroof, door handles, and then some of the fun stuff, which we do, is the infotainment and the technology that's inside the vehicle. So Tommy and I are part of the Connected and Shared Solutions Division that, uh, our, our core product in that division is navigation. So over the last thirty years, we have developed navigation for major corporate OEMs such as Toyota, Mazda, BMW. And with that experience, we've gathered a lot of knowledge with regards to location-based services. So that's how we find ourselves here today because we've taken that knowledge and we've been able to utilize, here's the presentation, and I'm not going to bore you with the first several slides because you know about ISHIN. Um, with that tech, or that knowledge, we've been able to create technologies that allow us to utilize vehicle sensor data, high-image camera information, in order to capture road surface quality, among other things. And so, again, these first few slides, like, we can obviously share this presentation with you, gives an overview of who we are. But I want to jump into what it is that we do, of course, uh, with regards to the road maintenance. So a couple of years ago in Japan, we developed a solution and it first started out by utilizing just wheel sensor data. We could simply just take the wheel sensor data in a vehicle and as, you know, there's lots of sensors in a vehicle, judging by the vibration, we could judge the quality of the roads. We took that a step further over the last few years where we're now utilizing high-image vis, uh, uh, cameras and AI technology in order to capture the image, use a deep learning library in order to identify cracks, potholes, rutting, so on and so forth. We launched that in Japan a couple of years ago. We're now launching, getting some municipalities in Thailand as well. We also have a group in Europe who's doing some work with regards to this similar type of services. But this is the first time that we're introducing it in North America. And so last, let's see, I guess it was a couple of falls ago. I came and I, I was introduced to Jacob and approached him about this particular technology because we need a municipal partner in order to test this in North America. Uh, this will be the first time that we'll be testing this with anyone in North America. So the service, we know that it works in Japan because we have it in municipalities in Okazaki City. We're launching it in Thailand. But in order to launch it in North America, we need to calibrate our, our system. We need to make sure that it's identifying the issues correctly because the roads here are a little bit different than the roads in Japan, the object's a little bit different, so on and so forth. So basically, and I'm sorry, I keep telling the presentation, not going, or giving this presentation, I go through the slides. What we want to do, and this slide illustrates what it is that we want to do. We want to take the edge computing unit, which basically is the computer, a high-image camera, attach it to a vehicle, and this can be any vehicle. It allows us to capture this data passively. So for example, you put it into a garbage truck or mail truck that's doing its normal job, going to pick up the, the trash, running its route, it's driving through every mile of the city. We put this technology on these vehicles and you can passively capture data about the road's surface quality. And so that information is sent to the cloud. It's actually processed in that edge computing unit in the computer, but then we take that data, send it to the cloud, and then we provide it to the users via a web dashboard. And that gives you real-time data with regards to the road quality. Now, uh, this is an image that gives an idea of what the service would look like. Uh, over there on the left, the onboard equipment, again, this is very simple. The beauty of this particular service is that there's very, very minimal overhead. Your staff just does their work and not even, they don't have to be cognizant of this equipment on their vehicle. Unlike other services out there, you can hire firms that can drive through your cities and they'll do this ser, the survey work for you, but it's once or twice a year and it's tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is low cost, there's low overhead, and it provides you real-time data. And as, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned earlier, this field test is free. We need a partner in order to help us gather real data with regards to how it's used and the roads. So real quick, what this is showing, again, the equipment, the various vehicles that can be used. On the right is a sample of the dashboard. And this is just some examples of some of the things that we, we can capture. Of course, potholes, cracks, uh, roughness, which is measured by the International Roughness Index. And just real quick, we can work with you in order to customize a particular, like, proprietary scale. That's the other objective of finding a field test partner. We want to test our technology, but we also want to gather your requirements with regards to how your roadworks crews work and some of the things that you need. And so by working with Jacob and Mr. Fuze and his team, we might be able to gather some of the things that you all need and then put it into this particular service. So the benefits of ARMS. Uh, first and foremost, you're saving resources. As I've emphasized many times, minimum resources, low overhead, low cost, removes the need to deploy these road survey crews to go and conduct these tests annually or biannually. You can do this passively. As I mentioned, you put it on a truck, drives down the road to pick up garbage, it's giving you this data. Now, ARMS can be, we call it ARMS, ISHIN Road Maintenance Service or Solution. You can use it as your single source for road surveys or you can supplement some of your different programs. We understand that there's competitors out there, again, that can do full-on survey and do all this stuff and give these very robust reports, but if going, again, you pay for that once. With us, we can do it passively, you can get this, uh, real-time, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Not only that, you can supplement some of the existing things you may have. And so we want to help municipalities the size of Cibolo and other municipalities who may have a smaller budget and can't afford to hire these big guys. You buy this equipment, you pay a certain charge per month, and then you put this on and you can add this information. It can either supplement what it is that you're currently doing or it digitizes your, your program or your processes and allows you to pull that process in-house. And of course, there's improved efficiencies, adding digitization to your asset management. Uh, right now, we're looking at just the road surface. But there's the potential that we could use the camera in order to identify other objects and assets that the city manages. So the field test proposal, uh, again, we, we would work with you all, identify one or two vehicles, take our equipment, install it into these vehicles. Let's say it's a garbage truck. Wouldn't require any of your resources, any effort from them. We would, of course, educate them on it, just that there's... We would, of course, educate them on it, just that they're, they're aware of it, so that they understand some of the things they have to do, like drive these particular roads, maintain a certain speed. And if there's any issues that happen, as long as they understand the equipment's there, they can assist us in, in troubleshooting. But as far as any costs or any additional effort, very, very minimal. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, again, the goal of this, test and verify the accuracy of our equipment. And we can work to fine-tune it to make sure that it is identifying all the things that your roadworks crews needs to see. And then, two, we want to, again, gain insights from your team, find out a little more about your processes, what it is that you all need, and this, are there any other features that we might be able to add to this to make it more effective and more, create more value for you all. Again, ultimately, once this goes to market, we really do note or expect that this will be able to help you all reduce your costs and reduce the amount of effort that you're putting towards your road maintenance activities. So, real quick, what we would propose to do is work with you all in order to install some equipment in some municipal vehicles. We'll work with you all to select the type of vehicle. There's certain things that we need to look at, like the size of the vehicle. Right now, the way we've identified is like, for example, if you have a larger truck that's really high off the ground and has a long trunk, it might not see the road well. So we'll work with you all to figure out what's gonna be the most ideal vehicle to utilize. Of course, capturing the road surface data is gonna be done automatically, sent to the cloud. We can share that information with you all in real-time, so that you can see what is capturing. And then we'll, of course, get your feedback to make sure that that data's gonna be relevant and useful to you all. That's the main purpose of this. This is just a schedule, what we proposed. We're looking at, at least two weeks that we would put this equipment on your vehicles to see how long, or what kind of data we would, we would need. Based on the results, we might work with you to see if we can extend it a little longer. But at least two weeks, we feel like we could cover enough miles to gather all the data that we're gonna need in order to fulfill, complete this, this test. So, I'm sorry, created this presentation for Jacob. This slide is a little more tactical, not necessarily something we should discuss here, but our next steps, of course, if this is approved, we would work very closely with Jacob and his team in order to identify the specifics of this test. Again, right now, we're thinking two weeks, but we'll work with them to figure out precisely how long we need in order to capture this data, identifying the vehicles, identifying the roads that are going to be needed to, 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 to measure. One note about this is that, of course, we want to focus on Cibolo roads, because we understand that there's difference in jurisdictions. There's Cibolo jurisdiction roads, there's roads from TechSta, and then there's federal roads. Of course, we're gonna drive through whatever roads that we, that Jake and his team decide. One of the things we want to look at into our service is how we might be able to differentiate that, because we understand there's a value, of course, for you all to understand that, yes, these are Cibolo's roads, these were the defects that we've got to fix, but you might identify things that TechSta might need, or the federal roads might need. And of course, we'll work to identify the human resources that are gonna be required to do this, train them up to let them know what is gonna be required from them, and again, it's gonna be very, very minimal. And then, of course, we'll discuss what we would like to get out of this, what the goals and expectations of Cibolo are as well. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, hey, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the partnership for ASN. And, uh, I'm sorry, I, I used to call it AW Texas. I've been around a while, so that was the code name for the project when we started a long time ago, so. Well, just thank you very much for coming out here today, and for thinking of us, and for getting us involved in this. And so I'm just gonna make a few comments real quick, and then I'm gonna turn it over to my council and give each person a chance to make a comment or ask a question, and then we'll take a quick vote, okay?
Okay.
But, one thing I wanted to mention is, do you want the data from the one I mentioned earlier, the 2018 or 2019 study that we did? Maybe we can give you the results of that study, and then maybe you could use that as baseline data? Because I think what would be helpful to us is if we had, um, you know, deviations between, you know, in 2018, you know, the road was X condition. Now, here we are, seven, I guess, six years later, and the road is at, you know, Y condition, right?
Right.
And so, I don't know if that would be helpful to you, but if we can give that to you, and you can maybe enter that data somewhere, or just use it as a reference point. And then, I know you mentioned a few times about, you know, putting the sensor or the, the, I guess, the
The cameras.
Technology, yeah, the cameras, on, uh, on the trash truck. And so, you know, we, we actually outsource our trash to Republic, so that may or may not be the best, um, uh, vehicle for, for this. I, I would think potentially a, a street sweeper. So we do have a schedule that has to go and sweep every street, I believe, in Cibolo. We have a, we have cer, certain quadrants within the, um, the, the city that I think, I think it hits every street. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on that, but anyway, I think that, that would be a good vehicle to put it on. And that would probably take more, more like a month, you know, because I think they have a certain, certain streets on certain, you know, routes, whatever. And so, um, other than that, you know, maybe a cop car might be an option, or, or we also have a chipper service.
Right.
Where we have a crew that goes around and looks for brush, that, you know, limbs and stuff, that people put out on the curb, and then pick them up. And so that, that also has a route that hits, I think, every street in Cibolo.
Okay.
So anyway, either the street sweeper or the, or the chipper, um, vehicle would be good. And so, um, yeah, that's it. But I wanted to open this up for, for my, my council, and give each person an opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments, so we'll start with Councilman Hicks.
This is great. I, I concur with what, um, the mayor is saying. I know that the one before, it had the capability of sonar, so it would penetrate. And I know that your, yours isn't so much that as it is driving and looking at the streets. And I think this is a great partnership between us and ISN. Th, th, this is really awesome, because I know that Ms. Cunningham wanted us to go and do a whole, look at all the roads once again, and, and you're right, we're looking at, back then, it was seventy. It's, I'm sure it's a hundred thousand dollars now to have that company come in and do the sonar and look at all the roads. But as to the mayor's, um, what the mayor's saying is, we, we've got several different vehicles, I think, that you could, uh, put, put this on. I don't know how many units that you have, that you can utilize this on, but most definitely, we, we've got several vehicles that I think that would be great to put it on, even if it's, you know, Jacob's truck, where he's having to go and check different.
Sure.
Because I'm, I'm constantly, and I, I know that you're gonna have to travel down Bolton Road out there at ISN, and you're gonna see that, that there's lots of potholes. But we're about, we, we've already started construction on it, but
Okay.
between y'all's building and Stolti, there, there's a lot of potholes there. So, it would be great, I, I think this is great, and I don't know if we've got, Mr. Reed, the GIS that could give them some maps to show them exactly what streets are ours. But, but to me, um, even going down FM seventy-eight and going down eleven oh-three, I know that those are, are state roads, but, um, they're, they're roads that need to, they get potholes just as well as, as the city roads. So, I think this is a great program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing this.
Sure.
And it's at no cost to us. I think that is just awesome and fantastic, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the passion. And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just address those few questions you had. Uh, I think the report that you were referring to was a, a report that was done, I think, twenty eighteen by Fugro. And Jacob did provide that to us, and we did look at it in order to see what type of data you all are utilizing, and so that it helps us to figure out, you know, how we should present, present to that data. In terms of looking at it, like historically, you know, doing a test and then comparing to that, that's something that we can certainly consider. The focus of this test primarily is to test the technology, to make sure the equipment's working. When we look at the data, of course, that's where we can work with you and figure out things like historic data, showing like, what are we measuring now versus what was measured then, and then getting your team's feedback in terms of how that data's gonna be useful for you. Now, with regards to the vehicle, totally agree, the, the garbage truck was an example of, you know, many things they can be using, whatever, garbage truck, mail truck, so on and so forth. We'll definitely work with your team to figure out what's gonna be the most appropriate vehicle to utilize. And like you said, we could just put it in Jacob's truck and just have him drive around the town. But one of the things we do want to test with the service is not just putting on any vehicle, driving it, and making sure that it's able to detect the objects. We do want to see that, yes, you know, just putting it into a municipal vehicle that's running regular routes, that it truly does capture passively the information that you all want.
Thank you, sir. Dick Castle, do you have any questions? No? Norma Sanchez Stevens? Katie?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, thirteen F.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. We'll start with Councilman Benson.
Aye.
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 Aye's have it. Thank you so much. Appreciate your partnership in this. Thank you. So we were gonna go to G, but I, I think we do have, um, yeah, I know. I know, I was just gonna, I know, I'll tell you. Okay, so I was gonna go to G, but I know we have a couple of items that require action, so I want to go get those done, because we do have a, a clock on us, that we gotta get these done by ten thirty. So, we're gonna go to the ones that require action, which is, um, I know. Eleven A, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the city of Cibolo, providing rules and regulations for traffic and vehicles on Tolly Road, setting a temporary speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour, requiring the installation for signs to make a, make the public aware of rough road conditions, and providing a penalty. Okay, Katie, just want to go ahead and make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we discussed this in executive session a little bit. Um, I'd like to make the motion to approve twelve, uh, eleven A as written.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. We'll start with Councilman Hicks.
Aye.
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 Aye's have it, seven zero. Sorry, Tim, we just didn't need a presentation. Great presentation, thank you. Sorry. Short and sweet. Okay, let's move on to twelve A. Approval, disapproval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay the Southern Plant payments for a future wastewater treatment facility as stated in the agreement between the city of Cibolo, the city of Shirts, and Cibolo Creek Municipal Authority, AKA CCMA. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I'm going to read one, uh, long sentence that's on your cover sheet. It's the background, and then I will be happy to answer any additional questions, if you have any questions at this time. Together, the resolution, that's item twelve A, and the MOU, that is item twelve B, represent the city of Cibolo's commitment to proceed with its obligation to utilize the CCMA, that's the Cibolo Creek Municipal Authority, Southern Plant, wastewater plant, and to make its financial contribution to the CCMA Southern Plant per the terms of the Southern Plant Wastewater Services and Funding Agreement, while it continues to complete the mediated settlement with GVSA, that's the Green Valley Special Utility District, concerning the Certificate of Convenience and Necessity, CCN, area for wastewater services. I'm happy to expand on that if you would like me to, or answer any questions.
No questions. Katie, you guys gonna make a motion?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay the Southern Plant bond payments for a future wastewater treatment facility as stated in the Southern Plant Wastewater Services and Funding Agreement by and among the city of Cibolo, Texas, the city of Shirts, Texas, and the Cibolo Creek Municipal Authority, and to change section six of the MOU Exhibit A to the resolution by replacing the word "construction" with "design."
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. We'll start with Councilman Benson.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye's have it, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, moving on to twelve B, approval, disapproval of a memorandum of understanding by and between the Cibolo Creek Municipal Authority, CCMA, the city of Shirts, Texas, Shirts, and the city of Cibolo, Texas, Cibolo, concerning the Southern Plant Wastewater Services and Funding Agreement, Agreement, and authorizing the city manager to sign the MOU. Mr. Reed?
My comment on the previous item also covered this item.
Thank you, sir. Katie?
I move to approve a memorandum of understanding by and between the city, the Cibolo Creek Municipal Authority, CCMA, the C, city of Shirts, Texas, Shirts, and the city of Cibolo, Texas, Cibolo, concerning the Southern Plant Wastewater Services and Funding Agreement with a change to section six of the MOU by replacing the word "construction" with "design", and authorize the city manager to sign the MOU.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. We'll start this one with Councilman Hicks.
Aye.
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 Aye's have it, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Reed. All right, moving on to thirteen A, discussion action on the revised inter-local agreement, ILA, concerning the funding, design, and construction of three roads, and authorizing the city manager to sign the ILA. Mr. Reed? I'm assuming this has to do with the amendment due to Guadalupe County approving the contribution?
I'm sorry, I was, uh, just informing the city secretary that I was gonna make that one-word change and get that to her, so that she could sign that tonight. Before you tonight, as the cover sheet explains, is the ILA that you previously approved that we then gave to Guadalupe County, and that the Guadalupe County Commissioners Court considered, as explained in the cover sheet. They asked for a change in the payment terms, which is reflected in your cover sheet. I tracked changes, so you see exactly what that change is. Since the packet was provided to the council, the county attorney did send to us, and the city attorney and myself, revisions to the words for the change in payment terms. Mr. George Hyde sent it back requesting a change, because the wording that was offered by the county attorney would have offered them the ability to extend it for three years, plus the original year. We have not heard back from the county attorney. So what I would ask from the council, if it was inclined to approve the change here, is to authorize the city attorney to change the wording of this per the agreement between the county attorney and the city attorney. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Hyde, if he would like to add to that.
Can we table it until the next?
The proposed change is shown to the city council above in red. It clarifies the, uh, payment process in either two or three fiscal years. Uh, and, um, we were, I would ask that, uh, the city council consider approving the document in a form that is, uh, approved by me as your city attorney. That way, there would be no substantive change, but if there was a tweak to the wording, then we could go forward and execute the agreement and move on.
Okay, so we can make the motion to, um, to provide our city attorney with the authority to make any, um, minor changes to this agreement as written, right?
Right. I mean, to, from a, a term of art is approved to form, that the, that the document in form is legally correct and, and consistent with the agreement made by the parties. So, uh, it would just be, uh, an approval of this item with the condition that it be approved as to form by your city attorney.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the revised inter-local agreement concerning the funding, design, and construction of three roads, and authorize the city manager to sign the ILA and give, in a form approved by the city attorney.
Second.
I've got, I've got something I want to add to, to this before we move forward. I was there, um, Mr. Reed was there. They felt like their back was up against the wall. I want to make sure, because the three of us were there, that we don't do this again. Because they, they felt, because it wasn't in their budget. I just want to, to let the rest of the council know that, you know, when we start doing these ILAs from now on, we make sure that we're talking with that other entity. They didn't really realize that this was coming about. They asked how long. I said, well, myself, the mayor, and, and Mr. Benson have been on CIP for several years. We've known about it, but they didn't.
Wolverton knew about it, and he's no longer around.
He's no longer around. That, that's
Yeah, and so that's the thing, is we've been dealing with people that are gone now.
And, I, I just want to express that from now on, when we, we do this, we need to make sure that we give direction, that, that they get, that the staff gets in touch with them, because they really felt, you know, this, that's why, um, when we went back up there the second time, when they're like, well, you know, we don't have it budgeted, and I, I mentioned to Mr. Reed, I said, hey, you know, what if we do payments? He goes, that's exactly what I was thinking. So, that, that's how this all came about, to do the payment plan, um, to, to do it in payments, where they have the opportunity to make sure they budget, and they're I just want to make sure that the rest of the council knows that from now on, moving forward, that we don't put I know that none of us up here would like that, if they came to us and said, well, you do it now, or you're gonna have to pay the cost of remobilization, and the price is gonna go up. So, I just want to pass that along to the rest of the council before we make this vote. I, I told the judge and the rest of them, I worked very hard to get those relationships with them. I don't want this to be a bruise, um, to, to that relationship. So I just want to pass this along. So I just wanna pass this along to council moving forward, that we need to make sure anything that we've got, they know about it ahead of times where they can budget for it.
Is that, is that a yay?
Yes.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye savit, seven zero. Thanks, Mr. Reed. All right, moving right along. All right, so we've already done B and C. We're gonna move on to D, and then we'll get to the G presentation. So D is discussion action on the acceptance of a pedestrian sidewalk easement. Ms. Huerta? All done.
Make a motion to approve 13D?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We'll start with Councilman Benson.
Aye.
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 Aye savit, seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Huerta. All right, moving on to G, discussion presentation on the city of Sibolo's 2023 resident survey. Mr. Reed and Dr. Longoria, welcome, Dr. Longoria. Thank you very much for staying late with us.
Mayor, council, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Longoria, who will give this presentation. I just want to raise council's awareness that this becomes another tool for you to use in your strategic management. And so when we update your strategic plan this year, starting with your workshop on March 16th, this becomes another tool for you as far as how do you evaluate what your priorities are? And with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Longoria.
All right, let's, let's start going through some slides. I'll try to keep this complete and focused, but also efficient. So let's get, let's get underway. I think I've got the button right here. All right, the resident survey was mailed to a random sample because we have good confidence in the results. And I'm very happy, it was great questions from council when I presented initially about six months ago, maybe a little bit more. We wanna make sure we get a good quality random sample so we can have some confidence in the results. And I have some very positive news here. The survey went out to 2,500 households in the city of Sibolo. We did target 300 surveys to apartments, generally because renters respond at lower rates. We had 304 surveys completed, a few more have trickled in since then, but 304 for the random sample. The response rate was around 12%, which is not in the danger zone within the, the, the range of a male survey, which is somewhere between 10 and 20%. So we're toward the bottom, but the good news, we have 95% certain that these estimates are within the margin of error of plus or minus 6%. We also did a, a open survey, 101 residents responded to the open survey link. Those results are also presented in the report, and, and you can make some use of those as well. But my comments today, we focus mostly on the random sample results. I compare the demo, just so you know what you're looking at in terms of the data and whether you can be confident in that, I wanna talk about the representativeness of the sample. I compare the demographics of the sample respondents to known characteristics according to the U.S. Census Bureau American Community Survey. A sa, the sample was determined to be representative in terms of income, race, and home tenure, which is the rent versus own indicator. Let me just say, this is an important note. I've never seen a survey as representative as this survey in Sibolo on income, race, and rent versus own. It nailed them pretty close to spot on. So that was great news, and I don't know what that means about Sibolo. I guess that means when people get a letter from the city, they don't throw it away in the trash, and they're happy to send their survey back. The sample is somewhat overrepresented in terms of age, more older respondents responded to the survey, the random sample survey. However, younger residents, as you might imagine, were more overrepresented in the open survey. In other words, if you cast the survey out through social media and other forms of dissemination or distribution, I should say, you're gonna get more younger folks, which is a good reminder of why you wanna try to do random samples when you can. But you can still get pretty decent data with, with an open survey. Rather than go through slide after slide and table after table, I did some selected items. These items were selected on the, based on the following criteria. Questions in the survey that really spoke to overall conditions or overall assessment, referred to widely used services, and, and as I read the open-ended comments, some patterns of priorities I was able to pick up while coding the open-ended respondents, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a few minutes. If you take a look at that first row, and generally to make good sense of these tables, you wanna combine excellent percent of people who said excellent with the percent of respondents who said good. When you add those two numbers together, you get 92% of respondents in the city of Sibolo said the overall quality of life was excellent or good. You see, as you go through those other, let's say, more overall assessment measures, police service, fires also rated highly, as you might imagine, safety in the neighborhood, water quality, quality of development, all rated pretty highly. You start going into lower, I won't hesitate to call them ratings, but lower percentages of people that say good or excellent with things like traffic flow, which is extremely common in the region. That 32% is exactly what the average of past surveys that I've done in the region. So that's not surprising, and you guys talked a lot about these kinds of issues today, so I'm sure you're no surprise there. Let me go through, this is a, this is a example of the tables you'll see in the report. I color-coded these, not to influence your interpretation, but to make them easy to visualize. The darker green is percent who said excellent, the lighter green is percent who said good. When you see those combined, you see, you see, you can just sort of follow these lines across. And you could pick up pretty quickly where some of the areas where the city does extremely well, and some of the areas where the city perhaps could have some areas for, for action and consideration in your strategic planning process. I wanna go through this fairly quickly, overall overview of the results. In terms of quality of life, that's rated very highly in, in the city of Sibolo. 92% respondents, as I said, rate the overall quality of life as excellent or good. If, if you're interested, I, I took the average of all the other surveys I've done in the region and over the last few years, and your rating is slightly higher than comparison cities. But it's all within the margin of error, so don't, I wouldn't necessarily make too much out of it, but it's of note. How about we put it that way? When I make regional comparisons, the city of Sibolo does receive higher resident ratings on housing availability, which is a big one. It was interesting that the city is doing very well in that compared to other cities. Traffic signal timing and city beautification, but there are lower ratings compared to other cities for parks, street repair, and rec programs. So again, these are things you can focus in more detail as you read the report. Terms of public safety, public safety services are rated very highly, over 90% rate police fire EMS is either excellent or good. 90% of residents rate safety in their neighborhoods during the day as excellent or good. And safety at night, 80% rate safety night is either excellent or good. So the cop, the police are doing a great job out there, at least in the minds of residents. They feel safe. And, and public services, things like garbage recycling, yard waste up, yard waste pickup, they are, they're rated very highly. That's pretty common across other cities. Areas where, that I thought were interesting, lower ratings were found for recreation programs, 52% said excellent or good, and services to seniors, these areas were a little bit lower, I'd say considerably lower in the case of rec programs than other cities in the region. So other cities are larger, for example, Georgetown is in that comparison group. Flugerville is in that comparison group, Hutto's in that comparison group. These are cities that have grown and been working through this growth. You guys are kind of a different stage, so it's not a problem or an issue, but again, something to talk about and reflect upon as you consider the results. 32% respondents rated traffic flow as excellent or good. The average for comparison cities, which I've mentioned casually a few seconds ago, was 31%. So again, number's low, but that's pretty much what you're gonna get in a fast-growing metropolitan area. If you read the open-ended comments, and I'll, you can take this, take some time on your own. You're gonna see those open-ended comments are presented in a table. Each one of those rows is an individual respondent. So each one of those rows are the comments that that one person made across those different open-ended questions. So that'll help you understand kind of patterns, what folks are saying, whether they're giving an opportunity to provide whatever's on their mind. And we'll cover some of those results as we go through. There's another measure, another question here, value for taxes paid. 88% of residents indicated they receive a fair, good, or excellent value for services for tax dollars paid. Notice how I threw fair in there instead of just excellent and good? When you just put excellent or good, it's quite a bit lower, but that question, I think, is interesting. I guess what most people would expect is get a fair deal for taxes paid. Who wants to pay taxes in the first place? So I think fair is a good thing and a good way of seeing a city that's delivering value for, for, for the money. Everybody just kinda wants a fair deal. So that word fair, I think, people bid on pretty hard. All the open-ended comments were coded, I put my wife to work, she did not appreciate that very much, but I got a student to help out as well. There's several open-ended questions, respondents were said, in your opinion, what should be the top three priorities for the city of Sibolo? All those comments, again, the full text is provided in the appendices, but as you code them, and you'll see it for yourselves very quickly, streets and roads, economic development, and public safety were the most important items noted. Another question, what would you recommend the city of Sibolo approve upon in the future? Again, it lines up pretty clearly with what they said, what are priorities. Road and infrastructure, responsible development includes lots of things. Slow growth, smart growth, more planning. Take a look at those comments, I think they're illustrative. And then when you clump them together, there's something of a pattern there. Again, I wouldn't, just something to reflect upon, just leave it at that. Traffic lights, lighting, and speeding, we had a citizen earlier today talk about some of those issues. I think you guys have been hearing plenty of those issues over the years. There's a lot of good details in the results. As you go through the report, and I encourage the staff as well to reach out anytime. I did some bi-varied analysis where I compared responses across the demographics or the household characteristics. You can learn really interesting things there that inspire maybe some managerial thinking. I'll give you a couple of examples. Again, those are in the text of the report in small tables where you see the different demographics and the responses. So I'll give you a good example here, the retail options. 60% of residents in households that earn less than $75,000, again, 60% rate retail options as good or excellent. 60% of those in between 75 and 100, $150,000 rate retail options as good or excellent. And 40% of those who earn more household income than 140,000 rate retail options as good or excellent. In other words, you see that as you get to the higher incomes, they're less satisfied. Not, not terribly surprising, but maybe they're looking for kinds of development you guys can talk about as a city staff and council. Another good, another good one to note is you'll see a lot of what we call in the public administration, public policy literature as a downward opening parabola. You'll see that people that are on the lower income stage will have, will have lower satisfaction. Middle-income folks tend to have higher satisfaction, and higher-income people, folks tend to have, again, lower satisfaction. Here's an example, question, overall quality of life. 87% of people who earn less than $75,000 rate overall quality of life as either good or excellent. 97% of those in the middle-income category, very satisfied. And then you go down to the higher-income folks, it's 90% who say quality of life is good or excellent. So that's what I'm talking about, that downward opening parabola. That's, there's psycho, psychological theories about, that explain that, about expectations and need. But I won't bore you guys with a public policy lecture at 10:30 in the evening. That, oops, concludes kind of our condensed version. I wanted you to get a sense of what's in the report, what to look for, how to use it. I've extended to city staff on occasions. I'm happy to come back and meet with staff. They'd like to review the results in more detail, then they can help, help, help get the maximum benefit out of the report. So I'll stop there and say questions.
Well, first off, I wanted to thank you very much for all of your efforts and all of your time that went into this. I know it wasn't easy. I know you spent a ton of time working on this, and I have appreciation for this type of work. Actually, in my senior year of college, I actually worked for a market research firm up in North Dallas. And so I've done a little bit of this stuff myself, you know, as a, in my past life, you know, right as I was about to graduate. But I know what goes into this. I know it's not easy, you know, it's a lot of data gathering and.
It's all about taking these lessons back to our students who make them better administrators and better folks for you guys to hopefully hire down the road. So I appreciate the collaboration. It means a lot. In fact, I had, when they had the presentation earlier from the, of the road conditions, my professor, when I was an undergraduate, blindfolded us in the backseat and drove us around. This is back in the 80s, and had us rate the road conditions. How much things have changed. Amazing. This is crazy.
Right, yeah. If a professor puts somebody in a blindfold, that might make the news these days, right?
I think it was great. I, I took it the online survey.
Oh, good, good.
I didn't get the mail, but I did go online and take that survey. I think it was great. I think the information that you brought back was, was awesome.
Yeah.
So how did that work? So, so it was mailed out to a select group of people?
Correct.
And the results were, what percent of the people actually replied?
We have about 12, 12 and a half percent of people replied.
12%.
Yeah, which is, again, for a male survey, that's pretty good. The, the fact that we matched up the demographics really is the most important thing, I think, for you guys to latch on to. What I, I just did a presentation of this earlier today in Georgetown, for example. Their response rate was 16%, but they, their population skews much older, and those folks will open mail and will return mail. You would expect there to be a higher response rate. I would say that the things that city could work on, if they wanna continue to do these surveys, just some advice, start collecting email addresses on your utility billing accounts. You can do these surveys all online if you reduce the size number of questions and random sample email addresses. And you can do these things in-house, a lot cheaper. I'm happy to help you guys to do that.
So, so my thought was, if we wanted to do another survey, what we could do is load the account numbers, because everybody has an account number, right? And so whether or not they're a water-plus sewer customer, or if they're just a sewer customer, they still get a bill in the mail, you know, for the sewer and the trash. I know I get one. I have a different water company. But everybody has a bill from Sibolo, and so we could use that account number as what validates them to be able to take the survey. So once they enter that account number in, it x's it out in the database, and then, you know, the, the household has voted, right? And that also verifies that they are legitimate Sibolo citizen, right? So that way, we're not having people, random people from outside Sibolo taking our survey, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can send them a, a unique code, and that's a way to do it in a completely online strategy.
It is what it is. Okay, well, all right. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And, yeah, we definitely, we definitely look at this as a first step, you know, and, and surveys are very important, and we're gonna wanna do more of them, and whatever we can do to increase the participation. Because I just feel like that if we had the ability to, to really advertise this, you know, when we do the next one, I think we've learned a lot from this, is what I'm trying to say.
Absolutely, absolutely. Staff, staff did a great job supporting this, by the way, and we did send a reminder postcard. So we, we gave it our best shot, and I did oversample the renters, so. We took a lot of good affirmative steps, but again, if we have emails, we could do email reminders. We could hit them a lot more often.
Well, I mean, emails are good, but a lot of people look at those, a lot of people have so much junk email coming in, you know, that it's just white noise after a certain point. I mean, yeah.
It's tough. It's getting harder to do this kind of work, as you might imagine.
Right. Okay, well, hey, thanks again. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? No? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to H, discussion action on the SAFER grant to include a four-year staffing request. Chief Troncoso.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll be discussing the SAFER grant and the staffing model for the next four years. Presentation overview, as you see there, we're gonna go, obviously, ask for council feedback. Current staffing for Station 3, where we're at, the SAFER grant, NFPA 1710, what's that standard is required. Fire department staff overview for 23 to FY '27. Staffing of apparatus and why. Overview of staffing for Station 4, the total, what would it call for the total build-out? And of course, the fiscal impact, and then, of course, I'll ask for council feedback as well. Does the council support moving forward with the pursuant of the SAFER, SAFER grant? That's one of the questions that'll be asked at the very end. So this is our current staffing for three fire stations. And if you look, we are, have a staffing of 36. We, we are short three personnel for three fire stations. So we are currently right under NFPA 1710, that's. That's a national standard that also falls in line with ISO, our fires... our fire ISO rating as well. So the SAFER Grant, the SAFER Grant is used to enhance the local fire departments, the abilities to comply with staffing responses and operational standards per NFPA seventeen-ten. The funding is for... it's a four-year grant. Year one, two, and three, historically, they paid a hundred percent, and on the fourth year, the city would have to recoup the total cost on the fourth year. So, for example, in FY twenty-two, the SAFER Grant funding as of September twenty-twenty-three, they awarded a hundred and seventy-seven grants, a total of three hundred and sixty million dollars. Our neighbor in city, right up the street, City of New Braunfels, this past year, got the SAFER Grant for twelve individuals. So that's definitely something... kudos to them. They needed... they submitted their grant, they got it. Unfortunately, this year, we did not, but we obviously want to try again. NFPA seventeen-ten is the standard, specific requirements for effective, efficient organization and deployment of fire suppression operations. It also... the standard addresses structural fires in three hazard levels. These include low-hazard residential, single-family dwellings, medium, garden home apartments, strip malls, and high-hazard structures, high-rise buildings. The standard addresses fire suppression, EMS, and aircraft, marine rescue, so covers all the gambits of it. The staffing positions, I'm not going to go in detail on them, but, you know, a company is a basic unit with manpower, with one piece of equipment, the battalion chief, the lieutenant, the driver, and the firefighters. That's all on one unit. In a... per vehicle, like, for example, Station One, you would have a lieutenant, a driver, and two firefighters. That's a full complement. You want the same thing for Station Two and Station Three. So currently, right now, like I mentioned before, two of our... two out of the three stations are fully staffed. One station is running with three, because we are lacking three individuals. So if you look at the top right there, in FY twenty-three and twenty-four, we acquired three firefighters. FY twenty-four, the request was made for three, and that would have finished out staffing for three fire stations. The request was denied due to budget constraints. So we currently are not meeting NFPA seventeen-ten. So the request for FY twenty-five will be for three, to try to finish out for three fire stations. And then if you see the graph right to the, I guess, on there for one firefighter, that's what it costs for one firefighter. That's... that is including their benefits. So if we want to add three firefighters in FY twenty-five to go at minimum, that's the cost that it would be. If we want to do four, that's the cost it would be, and we will be complying with NFPA seventeen-ten. One thing that to remember, when we opened up Fire Station Number Three, it was elected to open up at minimum, so we were mine at each station. With that said, every time that somebody went out for professional development on vacation or called in sick, generated overtime. So that overtime budget, it just put a wear and tear on us. So for FY twenty-four, basically the same... or twenty-six, I'm sorry, asking for additional, and it breaks it down there on how much it would cost each year. And, of course, it gives us the different options for twenty-six, and if we are meeting the NFPA seventeen-ten requirements or not. So at the end of the day, as we go to the next slide here, FY twenty-seven, NFPA seventeen-ten, at the end of the day, we want to be... have an extra staffing of fifteen. The fifteen would have twelve for anticipation of Fire Station Number Four, and then, of course, the three that we are still lacking to finish out, the staffing for Fire Station Number Three. Here's the need. Why do we need staffing? Okay? As you see, with three individuals on a unit, we work together as a team. We're not going to send one person out on the unit. So if there's three people on a team on an apparatus, those three individuals will stay together. If we have a company of four, we can split those two crews up, and we have two crews now that can do two different tasks at one time. We are mandated through Texas Commission on Fire Protection and the National Fire Protection Agency to have two in and two out, and also OSHA standards, that if we have two people go in, we need two people readily available to rescue us. And then item number three there also falls in line with our ISO. Our fire... our fire ISO rating, we have a consultant, and that's one of the big pieces that they're looking at, is in regards of having staff, staff individuals at the fire station. And number five there, a four-person crew is able to complete essential firefighting twenty-five percent faster than a three-person crew. Fiscal impact. So obviously, we're looking at, you know, given options that if the funds are going to come from the city or pursue the SAFER Grant. And here's the numbers right here. So if we were to be awarded a SAFER Grant, obviously, they were covered the first three years at a hundred percent. The fourth year, the city would have to recoup the costs and fund it from thereafter. The total SAFER Grant would be roughly, if we were awarded, at three-point-four million dollars and some change. And the graph there shows each year how much it would cost, and then the expenses not covered by the SAFER Grant is the COLA, the benefits, the gear, and the training. That is not covered in regards to the SAFER Grant, so the city would have to look at that and make sure that we are budgeting for that as well. So here's some fiscal impact on budget. You know, for fifteen firefighters, for uniforms, it's roughly a little over fifteen thousand dollars. Structural equipment for fifteen is roughly about sixty-six thousand dollars. We are mandated through the Texas Commission on Fire Protection to have two sets of bunker gear, so that we have to get two sets for each firefighter, because if they get... if it gets contaminated, they have to disrobe, shower, and that's part of the cancer initiative, that we need to have an extra set readily available so they can respond to the next call. And then, of course, our wildland and extrication personal protective equipment is roughly about twenty-one thousand dollars, so a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars of equipment, that personal protective equipment that needed... that needs to be budgeted, that the SAFER Grant does not cover. So at the end of the day, with anticipation of Fire Station Number Four right down the road, this is the total build-out of four stations, and with us having a total of twelve individuals at each station, we would be NFPA compliant. Our main focus, and my main focus, along with Mr. Reed, is that our individuals on... in the apparatus responding to calls, to have four managing companies all the way around. Council feedback. Does the council support moving forward with pursuing with the SAFER Grant? And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. So we don't have a vote on this one, so thank you very much. And we appreciate you going after the SAFER Grant. I don't know what we can say really publicly about this right now. I mean, we're still trying to get the grant, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your hard work, Chief Troncoso. All right.
Mayor, may I interrupt? Council, I'm aware that your screens are not working. I apologize for this error, this issue. It will get fixed by the next city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, it's late. So this SAFER Grant comes up every year, I assume?
Yes, sir.
All right. I...
Yes, this is since I've...
Since you've been chief.
The last four years, and we're in the process of ramping up.
We've never got it.
And we've never got it.
But New Braunfels got it.
But what are you requesting in this grant this year? Because I've got... you're requesting four?
No, we're requesting for the full complement for staffing for Fire Station Number Four plus the three that we're...
You're asking for the fifteen.
For the fifteen.
So I guess for me, I mean, I guess you can ask for whatever you can ask for. The real rub is, is that if you get it, let's say they magically gave you fifteen firemen, and the citizens say, you know what? We really don't want Fire Station Four. We have a problem.
We could still use a fireman in the other stations.
Well, it's a pretty full firehouse if you had a whole complement divided by three. So I mean, I just... I wonder if we're maybe putting personnel or the cart before the horse here, because if the citizens decide they don't want a Fire Station Four, I mean, we're probably going to have to come up with the money, but it would sure be easier if we knew what was going on. I just wonder if this happens every year, if we... and maybe it's like a Big Horn sheep permit in Wyoming, right? You only get one in a lifetime, and so you may as well shoot the moon, but I... and if that's the case, maybe, but I just wonder, you know, it would be... because now you're looking at one-point-one-three-eight million dollars in today's dollars in salaries for fifteen firemen, and you're cramming them in every fire station because we've hired them, and Fire Station Four is pushed back because there's no money because all the myriad of reasons of bond capacities and wastewater pipes, and so I'm just, you know, I get it, but I mean, at the same time, fifteen extra firemen with no firehouse is kind of a... it would add... it would add a lot of people to ask a question, like, what's going on in the firehouse? That's what I'm wondering. So I just... maybe we should look at what we need versus what we think we're going to have, and then next year, if we get the firehouse, then we'd really go full throttle. I just... I hate to sort of buy things that we don't have approval on yet.
Mr. Benson, we're required... well, when we brought ICEON in, we told them that we'd have a fire station within...
Well, we know someday, right?
Yes.
But we can just... based on everything we've heard tonight, right? We've got...
This is a grant... maybe we should talk about this in executive session next time. I don't want to go on too much in public about this.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
So if I could add, so one thing that... and I do understand the concern of Councilman Benson, is that currently, we are behind three individuals, right? Just to finish out the current three stations. So that was the purpose of showing, hey, each individual for three, for four. So we won't... if we apply for the SAFER Grant, we won't know until... if we want it, until at least November. So that still gives us some... after November, and then once, if we do get awarded, I would have to bring it back, and you would have to accept the awardance or not. So that's another thing.
Would you play with the numbers based on what they... what are the grants, and you might be able to say, well, we actually don't need that number?
Yeah. Let's get our game plan together, because we have till November, so let's talk about this in a future executive session. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to I, Discussion/Presentation on the Sibolo Communication Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are going to just kind of go over, do a quick overview of the communications program this last year, 2023. I'll wait for the presentation to pull up.
While we're waiting for that to come up, does this communication program, does that have to do with the CCLIC fix as well?
The promoting of the program, yes. Okay. So a quick overview here. We'll talk about a little bit of our branding overview, how the city of Sibolo communicates, a quick recap on social media events, signature events that the city hosts, current media and community engagement, and our video strategy. So tonight, at the end of our presentation, we'll just ask for any feedback or direction for the communications program for this next year. And here are the initiatives and goals that helped guide the strategy for this last year. And some of the communications challenges that I came into were information was not timely, information was not published or followed up on. Residents didn't have information on city initiatives, projects, and events, and our responsiveness to online inquiries. So we'll kind of go over through a few strategies that we put in place to address these. Just a visual here of the evolution of our brand as far back as I could find. That was the first one. Then we had this middle with the Buffalo, skeletal Buffalo, and then now the one we're currently using. And then right now, these are the current logos that we are using actively throughout the city by department. You'll see police, fire, animal services. The blue one in the middle is a CPA program, the police, citizens' police academy, economic development, and then a few of our internal for professional development, which have our goals, and a few others that we've... I found, I have found. So just a continuation of our branding overview with the new website that was introduced in 2023, we took that color scheme and pretty much adopted it to our external communication. So you'll see that there's an integration in our external documents, for example, the Sibolo Development Guide, the newsletter, we've got some graphics, and, of course, the strategic plan. And if you'll see on social media and whatnot, you'll see a lot of these colors that have come into play there. So we'll go into here how the city of Sibolo communicates digital through our website, our online calendars, we have social media. We'll have a recap here in a little bit, and include some of the opportunities that we had with paid ads, our ads, so CCLIC fix, see it, say it, send it through our Sibolo Police Department, and the in-Sibolo Community Hub, which I'll go into in a little bit here. In-person events that include meetings and our signature events, so town hall meetings, our city's signature events, and department-specific public outreach events, which would be through fire, police, those kinds of events. And then out-of-home advertising, we have our electronic marquee by CBS and the four portable marquees throughout the city. Then lastly, in print, we do have traditional media. I will go over that a little bit in a little while, and then our city newsletter, and then the chamber directory as well. So our social media overview here, one of the things that we did do was claim the city handle, so it's at CityofSiboloTX, which is also cohesive with our website, so sibolotx.gov. These are all the social media channels that we have an active presence on, and then we have listed them by department. This year, we did introduce a few Instagram, or our presence on Instagram to target that audience. Sibolo PD already had one, Economic Development, Animal Services is new, and then our... the city's Instagram as well. I'm sorry, I said this year, but in 2023. And all of these are all active pages, which you'll notice is X, or formerly known as Twitter. We've phased it out, out of the Sibolo Economic Development Department, and then we still use, but we're seeing that it's really trending downwards. We'll go into that a little bit here. So last year, we also purchased Sprout Social. This platform helps us to schedule evergreen messaging, messaging that we can use throughout the year, but also really figure out where and when to schedule the promotion and advertising of events. We can also use this specifically for reporting and listening. Report is... it gives us just a whole bunch of metrics that we'll dive into here a little bit, but really tells us how we're doing, any opportunities that we could capitalize on, and what's working, what's trending, and how we're doing up against with... against our competitors. So our performance summary for last year, 2023, this is in comparison to the previous year, 2022. You'll see here impressions. Impressions are any time a post on social media is seen on a news feed. Engagements are any interactions with that post, so likes, shares, link clicks, um, all the interactions of like, loves, reactions to them. And then post link clicks, those are, um, separated. This I wanted to point out because we are trying to link it back to our website. We're wanting to drive traffic back to our website for more information. So the information on social media is to capture attention, to get people to stop and look, but then click on the link to go onto our website. So we've seen, of course, that trend upwards, which is a good thing. Um, and then our engagement rate, again, it's, it goes back to how are the community, how our residents, how our followers are engaging with our content. And then post performance by engagement. So again, we wanted to focus in on the engagements with our posts. These are the four top posts at last year in twenty twenty-three. Of course, the announcement of the new mayor at the beginning of the year. Roads, as you can see, are popular, um, and then new announcement of new, um, personnel. And you'll see here, too, the total engagements are broken down by reactions, comments, shares, and that post link clicks as well. So we can really get into what is working, what people like to click on, what they're reading, um, where we can include more information, what stories we can tell, we can continue to tell. This one is my, is one of my favorite ones because we get to compare ourselves to our neighboring cities. For this one, we did use New Braunfels to the north and Shirts to our south, just to see how we fare up with them. Here specifically, um, want to note the published posts and the public engagement. So the reason I think for some of these numbers being so high is because we did revamp our social media strategy this last year. So it was, what we were doing was establishing a daily cadence of informative, um, engaging content. So you'll see that reflected in the numbers. It'll, what we're aiming for is to keep these numbers trending upwards for this next year. And you'll notice there, too, the audience, um, numbers. This is not just for City of Sibolo's Facebook page, but as you can see, their followers are, um, New Braunfels significantly more than ours, but again, what we wanted to do was to make sure that we were engaging and reaching our audience. I'm diving into events a little bit. Um, here we did have an opportunity to, uh, utilize the paid social media ads specifically for our city's signature events. So Sibolo Summer Nights and Sibolo Fest, we had spring cleanup that we used. Uh, these really pushed the the content towards, um, the geographical area that we choose. So it was always four miles around City Hall. And the more they interact, the more somebody likes it or sees it, the more that they will see our content after this ad ends. So depending on what what we were doing or what our goal was for these paid ads, it was either to get, um, event responses or people to a website or people to sign up. Um, they were all pretty successful throughout. Um, some of the numbers that I do have for the seven paid ads that we ran, we did have seventy-six thousand impressions. Um, these all ran between fifty and a hundred dollars, just really depending on the event. So opportunity for that the next year as well as we're pushing certain messaging. For our events new this year, um, worked really closely with Kelly. Uh, we brought in the Touch a Truck event for the Sibolo Summer Nights. That was a huge success. It was the first time that I'd been to a Sibolo Summer Night, so I wasn't sure what to expect, but it was, um, really a team effort, um, within the within the City of Sibolo staff to bring in all of our partners. I'm looking forward to that this next, uh, for this this year. Another one was downtown market days, the kids edition. This one we brought in over the summer to give the Sibolo residents something to do over the summer. However, it was a little hot. Um, a lot of the feedback we got on this was that they wanted more. They wanted more opportunities for kids to participate in downtown market days, be entrepreneurs for for the day and sell the items that they were making at home. And then one other thing we did for events was a live coverage of our stories. Um, instead of inundating our news feeds with, um, live videos or constant posts, we just threw them up on our stories that last twenty-four hours, but, um, we did get, we, I mean, we saw a lot of, uh, good feedback like this one. Uh, this one was for the holiday parade. Thank you for being the parade to those of us who were other places at the time. So what we're hoping with this, too, is that someone misses out, they get FOMO, and they want to come to the next event. So, um, we did get a lot of good feedback on the the stories during these events. And then print media, we'll go into this a little bit. Uh, we have a, we brought back the in Sibolo Newsletter, have our second edition out, our second issue. Another big one that we partnered with is the Chamber Guide. That one has also been distributed this year. And then traditional media, we do have a very good relationship with the Community Impact, um, staff, and then our, um, news paper on record is the Siggy Gazette. So those two are the ones that we follow closely. Um, we know that we'll get, um, I get responses from them, but we do send usually news releases to all of San Antonio and certain areas. And then, um, our community engagement, I know we talked about this a little bit during the bond presentation, uh, last meeting, um, but we did activate and go live with our public input portal. We purchased the domain, the Sibolo Tomorrow domain, and have, through our comprehensive plan, and so we have been using that to really use this as a community, um, public input, um, portal for our community. This is where we are getting feedback, and as you can see here at the bottom, we have had thirteen thousand responses from four hundred and sixty-five participants. And some of the comments that were coming, or that were brought up in Mr. Longoria's presentation, um, it's the same thing here. We have the same ability to capture any user the first time when they sign up. But once they have a login, they will, we capture their data and demographics the first time, and we've seen that be very successful already. And some of the projects and surveys that we have up, um, are the Comprehensive Plan, ITEN Corridor Plan, the EDC Strategic Plan, Charge Up Main Street was on there when it was live. It is showing as closed, uh, so that you can follow up with the results, but it is still up there. And then the twenty twenty-four bond program. And then lastly, a video strategy was introduced. We wanted to make sure that we captured that audience that likes videos and no longer likes the static images. Of course, State of the Cities, uh, we're working on right now, um, but we also started the Buffalo Bites, uh, video series, which is a city council recap videos. Those have done really well. Um, those are pushed through, um, uh, YouTube, uh, to all of our channels and, um, uh, I don't have. Yeah, those, um, metrics were captured in the overall, um, the summary a couple sites back. And then, uh, some other, um, short-form video strategy that we have introduced are reels. Those are specific to Instagram and Facebook, but have also been proven really successful. We've even tapped into some of the talent in our Public Works Department who, when allowed and time allows, uh, do record some of the projects, and those again have also been, we've received really good feedback on those. And then, of course, our video strategy also includes YouTube with our public meetings, our streaming lives, like our HOA, um, knowledge series. We do link that on our website. So that's it for me. I just can't have any questions or feedback as we continue our strategy to strategize for this next year.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Jeanette. I appreciate it. So, uh, we'll we'll go around and give everybody a chance to comment. We'll start with Councilman Hicks.
We have a couple of comments. Um, the C Click Fix, um, we've had some issues with that. I know that they've been addressed, but when we go, we have C Click Fix, the 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 customer, because that's what we are, we're a customer base, puts out a a request, and that gets closed out, and it's not had any work done to it or very little work done to it. We need to stay on top of that. Social media, I'm I'm glad that you brought this up because I don't like finding out about what's going on in our city on social media from just the regular resident. We've got three PI officers, two in PD and you. I think it'd behoove us as a city, as a team, to get us that information as quickly as possible. Whenever there was a shutdown just this past week, you know how long it took the school board to get their, um, their information that they had something go down? Just take a wild guess. Twenty-five minutes. You know how long it took for us? A lot longer than that. That that's disappointing. We were talking about communication. This is something that that I don't like going into Walmart or going into somewhere and they say, hey, what what happened here? What are you talking about? I think it would behoove the staff to make sure that y'all get on top of this a little quicker. I'm just, I I'm asking, this is a request by me as Councilman Hicks. I don't know what the rest of them will have to say, but you know, I, when when stuff happens, it it's nice to hear it from our experts first and hearing it on social media. That's all I've got.
Okay.
And and if I.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I may, I know, Mr. Hicks, you're addressing the staff. I just don't want Jeanette to feel that your comment was directed at her. You're talking about a specific issue that recently happened, which Chief Andres accidentally did not blind copy the council, and so it did not come to you until the next day. So we understand the expectation and we're striving to meet that expectation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. Um, Councilman Hetzel, Councilwoman Sandra Stevens. Councilwoman Cunningham.
Yeah, so I'm gonna kind of agree and disagree with Joel. Um, I think that y'all are doing a great job. There's a lot of information that goes out. I I enjoy knowing things, but I also know that we need our staff to be able to do their job and not worry about, did they text a council member? Did they tell us something ahead of time? So I I think that maybe because this has come up a few times, maybe that's something that we come up with a a guide for, like what qualifies? Do I need to know if someone shoplifted a piece of gum? No. Do I need to know if there was a school lockdown? Probably. If it's going to be something that ends up on social media or in the news, we definitely need to know that. But we need to draw the line. We do not need to know everything. That is not our job to know everything. We need to let staff do their jobs. Um, and if they're busy trying to contact us just to give us an FYI, is that going to impact the services that they're able to provide? Um, I think you're doing an amazing job with social media. I see your stuff on LinkedIn. I see it on Instagram. I see it everywhere. So it it's definitely built a presence. It has, even though the colors and things change from fire and from notice, it's all cohesive. And so I think you've done a really good job building the brand as well. Um, I looked through the magazine the other day because I found it in my car, cleaned it up. It's it's very well done. I think that you've done a really, really great job. Um, I don't really have anything to say unless maybe you could, not everyone here is on social media, but I know that all of us have the opportunity to improve. If there's something that we can do that can help you where we're not overstepping you or or causing more problems, let us know. If you want to do like a Facebook etiquette one-on-one with all of us, you feel free for that, too. Uh, I think we can all improve. We are all a team. We are all a part of Sibolo. We all need to try to do our best to represent the city. So thank you for all that you do.
Councilman Mahoney.
Yeah, I'll have a a quick thought. It's it's personal, I guess, for me. And I'm not faulting you or the city manager or the IT director or anybody when I say this. It's just my perspective. You're you're doing a great job, but I don't need the attention, the celebrity status, the rock star pictures, the big, I've told you this before. You're not surprised. I'm, no, I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to go there. So I'm I'm taking a amusing jab at a few of my friends up here on the dais when I say that I wish we could tone down that part of this a little bit. I my feelings about being a public servant have never included trying to be a celebrity. And, uh, you don't have to give me undue amount of tension, of attention in that regard. So I'll just leave it at that.
I agree, and kind of sorry to echo off of that. I would also like to see more of recognition of our staff and of people in the community who are doing things. I know that we've talked about that on our strategic plan, a little bit about doing more recognitions. We've done a lot more proclamations, I feel. Um, and we've done the staff recognition for their time here, which are fantastic. Um, but I think that that's something that we could also start incorporating in social media as well.
Yeah, maybe a little segment called Community Heroes, you know, like something like that. We'll we'll build on that. Um, Councilman Roberts, you got anything? Councilman Benson? Okay. Thank you very much, Jeanette. Appreciate your time. All right. Discussion on the council office completion date and getting locks on the doors. Councilman Hicks.
I think that I've addressed that. Well, they need to, they need to make sure this one gets rekeyed. That one's already keyed. It's locked, but it's not keyed right. But, um, we we've got to get a better handle on the computer back there because it's not working right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to discussion on naming future streets in Sibolo after former mayors. Councilman Hetzel.
This isn't necessarily a big one, but one of the things that reminded me of this is just, just recently, we had a tree planting ceremony up front for some, um, people that made contributions to the city. And one of the things about it is, is that I'm recommending that at least as we construct new residences and whatnot, that we consider, or at least to have the builders consider, using one of the straight, uh, street names, uh, named after the mayors. As I was kidding with someone, I said, well, we can have Boyle Boulevard and the other one, uh, you know.
Was it Allen Alley or Allen?
Yeah, Allen Alley, yes.
Alley, right? Thanks.
So it, uh, it's one of those things I'd like to consider in the future.
Just an alley. That's all I get.
Didn't we have a whole protocol on naming after people? Yeah.
Yeah, that's for like, like, can, you know, like YMCA's or something like that. He's just talking about street names. It's different. This isn't like somebody donating, you know, two hundred and fifty acres for a something.
There are street naming protocols that we follow consistent with Guadalupe County for addressing purposes, nine-one-one purposes, so. But with with the comment by
Yeah, if we find.
Mr. Hetzel, if there's a developer who's willing to consider those names, um, really, they select the names and we can suggest what they'd like to name them, but we would be happy to promote that.
Yeah, if we find a friendly developer, I mean, we all know a few of them, and maybe, you know, one of their next developments, like, we could talk to him about it.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to L, discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. We will start this one with Councilman Benson. Got any input here? Uh, L. Nope, okay. Roberts? Okay, Mahoney? Nothing. Katie?
Um, we have the HOA Roundtable. You did go to something. We have the HOA Roundtable. Um, I wanted to thank staff for pulling it together at the last minute. Our main speaker pulled out that week. Didn't give us much notice on that. We still had people attend. It was a shorter session. Um, but it's, I still think it was a success. We had a lot of good questions from the HOAs, and they gave opinions on the direction that they'd like to see the workshops go and the types of topics. So it's always interesting. Every every session, we've asked everyone to give input on what topics they'd like to see the next session, and then you have people complain about the topics that you present, which are based off of what other people recommend. So, uh, at the prior session. So we're going to have a debrief on that like we have with the last two and make a plan for the next one coming up and work on possibly doing direct mailers to HOA members.
plan for the next one coming up and work on possibly doing direct mailers to HOA members to get them notice of the event. I also attended Pizza with the Police at Grampy's. That place was packed. I thought it was packed for my kid's spirit night. There was no tables at spirit night. There were people parking all the way down the street. The entire parking lot was full. It was huge. The officers were, it was just a really great environment, a really great spirit. It felt like a community where, where relationships with the community, between the police and the community are important. Like you could feel that there. It was really, it was really great. Y'all did a fantastic job with that. And that is it. This weekend is the Senior Sweetheart Soiree at the Noble Group. We have a ton of volunteers already. We have a ton of people who have stepped up and donated, but if you know a senior, please let them know that that is this Saturday and...
What's the time again?
It is 1:00 to 4:00.
1:00 to 4:00, okay.
And then, I'm trying to think. Oh, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, they are having a, an event on, I wrote it down, February 23rd at the McKenna Museum in New Braunfels. It's called Who Mentor You? And it's, one of the council members from New Braunfels will be the keynote speaker. That's a really great event, and they're a really great partner in our area, especially with the most recent student death at Clemens. It's really important that we have those resources, and we encourage, we help work with those community partners so we can continue to have those resources in the community for our kids in need.
Thank you, Katie. Mrs. Sanchez Stevens.
Piggybacking a little bit more on the police department, the Citizens Police Academy is beginning on this Thursday, 11 weeks, just wanted to put that out there. Also, tomorrow, it's the second anniversary to the Senior Center. So if anyone on council has an opportunity to make it, that'll be tomorrow at the Senior Center. I did attend a youth council summit this past weekend, last weekend, and I'll bring more of a presentation, and hopefully Peggy can put that on the next agenda so I can go ahead and present that. That's about it.
And what was it, it's 11:00 AM till when, the Senior Center thing tomorrow?
You know what? Let me...
I think they open until 11:00.
No, the, but the, the deal we're doing, or 11?
I'll get it.
Okay, thank you. I'll just say 11:00. I'm just trying to write this down for Buffalo Bites. Okay. All right.
Just a minor thing, we talked about some meetings we were at. Seems like our police chief was last seen this morning at the Senior Center, wearing his cape, his crown, and it was a fun morning, to say the least. The only thing I've seen top it is somebody doing line dance, but I haven't seen him by there lately. So, of course, anyone in here is welcome to join us in the council, from the council.
Second anniversary for Senior Center is tomorrow at 11:00.
11:00, okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Hicks.
It spoke my mind on the, going to Commissioner's Court earlier. I don't need to, AAMPO, we canceled our meeting, didn't have anything on the agenda, but attended a couple of ribbon cuttings. You were at the one on Friday.
Bubbles Place?
Yes. There was one yesterday that myself and Ms. Sanchez attended, Be Organized, Jennifer Oliver, she is a resident of Sibyllo, she works out of her home. She's an organizer, organizes closets, organizes pantry, organizes the house, organizes moving. She's the first one in this area, so if you need any help, please reach out to her. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Hicks. All right. On to M, discussion on act, I'm sorry, discussion on items the city council would love to see on the future agenda. Start with you, Councilman Benson.
So the first one has to do with, if they're gonna come in and fix these screens, can you have them look at that microphone? It sounds literally like I'm in Charlie Brown Snoopy's episodes up here, and everybody sounds just like, wah, 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 wah.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's actually driving me crazy, to be honest. I don't know if that's the goal. If it is, I'm there. Already there? Okay, well, whatever. That is not working. Whatever that is, it's, it's not a microphone. Thank you. The other one is, I think I've already sent emails, but I want them to be publicly discussed, or public, so people know the trespassing in the parking lots. We need to probably bring that back for some sort of discussion sooner rather than later. And then still would like to have the discussion on the traffic lights at, or the traffic light at Borgfeld and Sibyllo Valley Drive. It looked like a, an illegal parking lot today on my way down here in the suicide lane. We've got to come up with, something's not right with the traffic study, or the traffic study has not been updated since 15 businesses have moved in. So we've got to get that straightened out.
So you want more time at that light from a direction or both?
I am a person who read a study that other people in this town said, guess what? We stink at this, and they're right. And I did not participate in the study. I'm just a guy who's trying to go places and say, hey, we stink at this. I mean, at 5:00 in the morning, all right, 5:50, and I'm sitting at a red light and there's no one else there, something is wrong, right?
Yeah. I think those are laser detected. If they don't see any cars and they flip.
Okay, but then at 6:00 at night, right? It's a traffic jam. With some things, there's a traffic study that was done. I don't know if it was the Walmart that drove the original traffic study, because that's about the time the light came in, and then there's been, how many things since Walmart showed up? And, and that light hasn't changed in years. So we've got to figure out what to do with that and re, reengage with what other traffic studies, because you're about to add another restaurant there, right?
Okay. So, so, okay, so your agenda item is review of traffic study at Borgfeld and Sibyllo Valley Drive, right? Okay, so let's, let's make that an agenda item.
And, and I'll be more specific. It'll be review of the Borgfeld-Sibyllo Valley Drive traffic signal timing.
Yep.
You can refer to TIA's, but it's really about the timing of the signal. So we'll bring that on the, on the next council agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. All right. Councilman Roberts?
Couple of things.
What you got?
Along with the traffic lights, the, the one at HEB at 1103 and Main.
Yeah, too short.
Three cars.
Yep.
And that's if all three are paying attention and the third one busts the lot. Yeah.
I'm not saying I've run it a couple times, but I'm saying it's been...
Pink, it's pink.
Okay. You hear that, chief?
That one's a huge problem. Then to compound that problem with their grocery pickup, when it gets peak time, let's take Super Bowl and all that, they'll go out there and throw cones where you can't get in the parking lot off of Main Street, because they want to reverse the traffic through their, I get that, but that causes a huge problem for our folks and...
They can't do that.
I watched a lot of elderly people go down there, they're confused, they don't, then they go to the bowling alley and have to turn around and come back, and they shouldn't be able to change the direction of our traffic flow off the street. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I agree with you. Yeah.
And that's, we got to put a stop to that. Ever, ever peak from New Year's Eve, Christmas Eve, all their peak times, they've done that.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, but the Open Meetings Act really is not to talk about these things, it's just to tell us what we want to do on the agenda.
Yeah.
And not that I'm trying to get home anytime sooner, but if I could stick to what the topics are instead of discussion.
Yeah, let's be succinct and talk about what item you want and then move on. Okay.
Okay. And next item, I guess the item we need to look at is how we're gonna proceed with Legacy fixing their situation up there.
I can send council an update. There's communication between me and the new CEO of Legacy Traditional Schools.
Okay. Councilman Mahoney? Nothing. Councilwoman Cunningham?
I don't have anything right now, but I have several meetings in the next few weeks, so I will have things to add.
Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens?
I'm good.
Okay. Nothing for you, Dick? Okay.
Nothing I can take out?
Nothing.
But if I do, I'll email it.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item number N, discussion action on the review and confirmation of all upcoming special meetings and workshops, and scheduling the time, date, and place of additional special meetings or workshops. Ms. Simmons? No changes? Okay. All right. All right. Item number 14, do I hear a motion? All in favor? Any votes? We are adjourned. It is 11:15.